Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is called to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening?
Ms. Pamela Gis. Geis?
I guess.
Yes.
You may be the only person that's ever gotten that correct, the first time, but thank you. Yes, I'm with Launch Development Finance Advisors and I'm here on behalf of the Merrill Ranch Owner's Agent. And we are just here to say that we're not in support of the reduction of the ad valorem tax on the Merrill Ranch CFD District Number One. Because we have submitted a feasibility study and the reduction in that ad valorem tax will ensure that we're not able to recover our expenditures for reimbursable project costs. So I'm just here to get that on the record, if anybody has any questions.
All right. Unfortunately, at call to the public, we can't, you know, ask questions, but thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time at call to the public? Mr. Billingsley, prior to closing call to the public, is there anything that you would like to say?
No ma'am.
Okay, all right, closing call to the public. At this time, we are going to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hi, Mr. Sanchez, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing, item A, to receive citizens' comments on property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Ordinance Number MRCFD-1116-19, this is ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from the funds for community facilities expenses for fiscal year ending 30th day of June 2020.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the first public hearing on a property tax levy for CFD Number One. As the district treasurer, I'm requesting that the tax levy rate be set at .4, .42 per $100 of net assessed valuation. The levy will bring in about $124,779, which will be used for debt service. I also ask that additional 30 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation for operations and maintenance. The additional 30 cents per 100 of net assessed valuation of the ad valorem will be approximately about $83,685. The total levy, if you add both of them, the 42 cents and the 30 cents, that equals 72 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation. If you combine the $124,779 and the $83,685, the total of the whole will be 208,464.
I do have a question, just because in going through, reading the packet and then listening to what you just said, you mentioned a $4.42 per net assessed valuation, but in the packet, and what's always been traditional, has been the 3.25 per $100 net assessed valuation with the 30 cents per $100 net assessed valuation.
Yeah, the .42 per 100 is for our current debt service. That's not factoring any future debt service that we may, or any future bonding. So that's why it's at .42.
Okay, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, we actually have Michael Cafiso, who is our bond attorney, here this evening with us. And if Michael could come forward, one of the things that I would say, just for clarification purposes, is there was a law passed two legislative sessions ago that very much speaks to tax rates, how they're set, and what can be taxed based on actual funds that must be repaid. In this case, the expectation has been, over the last two years, to meet the intent of that state law, that we have not gone to the streets specifically for a general obligation bond offering in many years. The policy of the board previously was to maintain the same rate in both CFDs. It became clear that we could not do that last year, so there was an initial reduction in the rate per the state law requirement last year. And furthermore, the recommended reduction this year is to stay in compliance with the state law. So that's why you see not the maximum rate, but a significantly reduced rate that's slightly higher than 40 cents per 100.
Yes.
So with that, I would turn it over to Mike.
Excellent.
Good evening, Chair members of the board, Michael Cafiso, Greenberg Char rig. We've been bond counsel to the town and to the community facilities districts since the inception of the community facilities districts themselves. I really can't state it any better than the manager just did. There is a law that was put into effect, actually a few more than a couple of years ago, but it became effective after a period of time to let it work its way into the actual application. And basically what it requires, it basically provides that we can't levy more than what we need to pay debt service on outstanding debt plus planned debt, plus 10% of the debt service due in the current fiscal year as a reserve cushion. And so what staff is telling you tonight is that that's that number, the 42 cents, because we have no, we don't, based on the current outstanding debt with no planned future debt, that's all we need to be within the four corners of that statute.
I understand now. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any members of the council that have any questions? Since this is a public hearing, is there any members of the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns?
This is part of the public hearing, that my comments earlier apply in this specific instance, that we're objecting to the reduction because we are seeking reimbursement pursuant to the feasibility report that the Merrill Ranch Owner's Agent submitted. And the reduction in the ad valorem tax rate will effectively mean that we cannot, that the Merrill Ranch Owner's Agent cannot get reimbursed for the expenditures that they've submitted under the feasibility study.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Billingsley?
Michael was telling me some things during the comments that I think would be meaningful for the council to hear. It's your pleasure, if I could allow our council to say so.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to ask the person submitting the comment what their ownership right in land in the district is, what standing they have to raise any sort of issue with taxes being levied.
If you can just speak into the mic, too, it's challenging.
Sure. Again, my name is Pam Gis. My, our client, the Merrill Ranch Owner's Agent, does retain some property, as I understand it, that's still in the district.
So you're here as an attorney for the...
Oh, no, no, I'm here as a, with Launch, as one of their financial advisors.
And you have authority from them in some written form to lodge it?
I have authority to be here to speak on their behalf. So it's my understanding that, I know that they still, that Merrill Ranch Owner's Agent still owns property. And my understanding from them is that it's in the, that it's in the district.
Just to be clear, that's not correct. The owner's agent does not own land. There are other entities that are related that own land, but not the owner's agent. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay, thank you. So the owner's agent does not own land. Is that correct?
That's correct, according to the last title reports we saw.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Any other comments or questions from public? Okay, with that, we are closing that public hearing. And I need a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn from Merrill Ranch.
It's checked for action.
Item B. Item B is next on the agenda.
Okay, but item A in our agenda is checked for action.
I apologize, that's a typographical error on the action item itself. It will come back before the council, before the district board on July 15th for action.
Okay, thank you so much. Item B, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposal final budget for the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One and possible adoption of Resolution Number MRCFD-14019, a resolution of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 1920. Mr. Sanchez.
So the budget that I have for council's consideration tonight is 3.8, $3,899,607. The budget is comprised of capital improvements, debt service, and administrative costs. So that's what the monies would be used for.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Council member, no, board member, Cortez.
Yeah, so I, when I'm looking at this, are the HOA fees supposed to be reflected in this budget?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, this is also a public hearing, so the public hearing is opened up. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak, questions, comments, concerns at this time?
Mayor, I do have a clarification. The HOAPs are not part of the, of this, of this CFD.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, the CFD is a separate quasi-governmental entity that's specifically utilized to finance infrastructure. So rates are set for that quasi-governmental entity to pay back debt. And the budget itself provides for the funds to operate that district on an annualized basis.
Okay, now this is also marked "public hearing" and "action item." So at this time, I need a motion to approve the budget.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number MRCFD-1140-19.
Second.
Mayor, did we actually open and close the public hearing?
We did.
I didn't hear it.
I did. I said we're opening it and then we're closing it.
Okay.
And you just made the first motion and a second?
Done.
And a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, October 1st, 2018, and October 15th, 2019, special meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, October 1st, 2018, and 2019, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion?
Need a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. AA is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two. Ordinance Number MRCFD-2, 216-19, this is an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying, la, 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 levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020. Mr. Ray Sanchez.
Yeah, so this is the first public hearing on property tax levy for CFD Number Two. Again, as the district treasurer, I'm requesting that the tax levy rate be set at 3.25 per $100 of net assessed valuation. The levy will bring in about $698,767. Those funds will be used for debt service. Also ask that you also approve 30 cents per 100 net assessed valuation in the sum of $64,501. This ad valorem levy will be used for operations and maintenance. Again, similar to the one before, if you add the 3.25 and the 30 cents, the total levy is 3.55 per $100 of net assessed valuation, or a total of both of $763,268.
Correct. So there's no change. It's continuing on exactly the same as it has in years prior.
My understanding, yes, that is.
It's just always easier if we communicate it that way. Are there any questions or comments from council? I'm opening the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak or ask any questions? With that, we're closing the public hearing for this. This item will appear on July 31st, or July 15th, for final adoption.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to mention that CFD Number Two is actually going up 27 cents from last year.
Hang on, show me where, because when I was reading it, it looked exactly the same. Where did you find that extra 27 cents?
I looked on my last year's tax bill.
Well, I was looking at this one that we were given, and on the ordinance that we're looking to pass and the background and discussion from years prior, it has the same exact numbers. Mr. Billingsley or Mr. Sanchez, could you chime in at this time?
The town, since the inception of both CFDs, has always taxed at the maximum rate. Last year, as part of our financial analysis, we were able to determine, or our finance director was able to determine, that we could do a reduction based on the fact that not any additional debt was being levied. Further financial analysis, including the audit that we have recently completed this year on the CFD, tells us we need to continue to assess at the maximum rate. So there was one year where there was a reduction of 27 cents, but that rate needs to go back up to the maximum rate to cover our debt.
Okay. Madam Mayor, it's going to show up on that next agenda item.
Gotcha.
Item 8B. There's a worksheet, Schedule B, that shows 2018, 19 assessment or levy, and then the projected for 2020.
All right, if we can keep all of those documents fluid instead of separating them, that would be helpful for me. Thank you. All right, I opened the public comments and questions. And if there are none, we are going to go ahead and close it. Next item is item B. This is our public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two and possible adoption of Resolution Number MRCFD-237-19. This is a resolution of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 1920. Mr. Sanchez.
So the budget that I have for council's consideration for CFD Number Two is $4,447,321. Again, these funds would be used for capital improvements, debt service, and administrative costs.
Okay. Are there any questions from any council member, questions, comments, concerns?
No.
From public, at this time, I am going to go ahead and open up the public comments. Any questions, comments, or concerns? And closing that time period, with that, we need a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt the final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two and adoption of Resolution Number 237-19.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, October 1st, 2018, and April 15th, 2019, special meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, we need an adjournment?
I'll make a motion we adjourn from the, what, which one are we in now, Number Two? Merrill Ranch, District Number Two.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 10 is public hearings and presentations. Item A is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the use of fiscal year 2019, CDGB, which is the Community Development Block Grant Regional Account/State Special Project Funds, as are required for submissions of the grant application. Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Each year, the Department of Housing and Urban Development gives local communities a certain allocation of funding to be used for community revitalization activities. And that money is given to the State Department of Housing, which in turn works with our central Arizona governments to manage those funds and push them down to the local level. For many years, we partnered with the town of Winkelman and applied for these funds every other year to accomplish our projects, and that gave us more money to use on these projects. With a good example being, just this last year, we applied for $330,000 to do water line improvement project here in town. Well, this year, it's a little bit different. We received a $91,000 allocation for a single year, compared to $165,000 last year. We decided not to partner with Winkelman with the intent of partnering with, or coming under Pinal County and their entitlement allocation next year. And so we decided to go ahead and apply for this year for a different project. And so this public hearing, excuse me, solicits input from the residents for this project. But I just wanted to give a brief rundown of the CDBG program. It performs a variety of functions for communities, so don't forget. It assists with revitalizing neighborhoods. You can also accomplish economic development activities that create jobs, and it also provides money to improve public facilities and services. There's three national objectives that need to be met, one of three that need to be met. The benefit low and moderate income persons in town, the removal of slum and blight and urgent need. If you had a significant issue with an infrastructure project or something like that, that would fall in that category. We typically apply under low to moderate income benefit. And those projects can be housing rehabilitation, it can be water line improvements, it can be the removal of architectural barriers, such as the installation of ADA compliant ramps and so forth. So that's just a brief rundown. We have two members of the public here this evening that would like to speak and provide their input for the use of funds. And we have Ms. Catherine Vargas and Mr. Bob Mack.
Okay, before we call them up, I just would like to, for council's also knowledge, at the most recent CAG meeting, Mr. Benjamin Bitter and I had attended and communicated that we would not be partnering with Winkelman, that at the same meeting, Pinal County had provided their presentation, and it is our understanding that we're looking to go under them, and that's why they also presented to us at the most recent council meeting. So if you would, without further ado, go ahead, and we can start with Ms. Catherine Vargas. How are you today?
I'm fine, thank you. My name is Kathy Vargas. Catherine is my signature name, my legal name, but I go by Kathy Vargas. I've lived in Florence since 1989. I bought my home at 410 North Poston Circle approximately 1992. I've been there this year, would be 28 years. I've done some fixing up in my house on my own. Due to my chronic illness, I had to get rid of all the carpeting in the house and put tile. Since then, some of the tiles have broken. I've not been able to fix it. Last year, there was a storm, a major storm, that took the fence, the whole north side of, or east side of the fence down, and it was a redwood fence that I had installed about, had been there for about 15 years, so under my insurance, it only gave me a certain amount of money. I borrowed some money from my children, and for $2,500, I repaired it with a block fence. So I have a partial block fence, and the rest of it is a redwood fence that's about ready to fall down. My main concern about the fencing is that I have a pool which would give access, that's the only fence that provides access around my swimming pool. The pool was put in so that it could help my back, since I've had back fusion surgery twice. I live with a chronic illness called hypogammaglobulinemia. It is an immune deficiency illness which affects your white blood cells. So I have to get gamma globulin treatment every three weeks for the rest of my life, and I have a nurse that comes to my house to give me my infusion. So my house has to be kind of kept where all my medicine can be stored, and so that it's in a good shape. I do have a tile in the kitchen where she does my infusion preparation that we trip over. I've tripped on it. Matter of fact, I tripped in my house last night. So kind of tripped in the house four times since my last, my last back fusion surgery. And I also lost some roof shingles off of my roof during last year's storm. The insurance gave me money for that, but if I had to use it for the fence. My roof has never been replaced, and I've lived there about 27 years. My AC and my heating has not been replaced. The heating is probably as old as the house. My house was built in 1959. house was built in 1959, same year I was born, which makes me 60 years. I also don't have any, my paint is chipping on the outside of the house. I have grandchildren that I take care of, and all the neighbors around me are small little kids, and I just worry about the paint chips. So there's several things that I need done on my house, even though I've replaced my windows so that my asthma doesn't affect me when there's a dust storm, and I've taken out all the carpet and put tile in, and then, of course, I put the fence in, which is now no good. Half brick and half old redwood fence, and I've used all the monies. There was also some awning in the backyard that I lost during that storm last year also. Everything is documented in my insurance claim. I'm also here to speak for Mr. Bob Mack. He is my neighbor. He is a veteran of the Vietnam War. He is 77 years old and lives three houses down from me, and wasn't aware of this grant until I talked to him about it. The reason we talked was because last year, we both got hit with the storm. It took down his tree in his front yard and some awning on his carport, and he let me tour the inside of his house, and he's got foundation problems. He lives alone by himself. He didn't know how to fill out an application, so I made a phone call to Jennifer Evans and talked to her and asked her if she would call him. He doesn't write. He asked me to write for him to fill out the form today because his hands are too shaky, and he also asked me to speak for him. But if he would like to speak anything, he says no.
Thank you very much for allowing me to attend this meeting, and I cross my fingers and hope I get some help.
Yes, we're both rehabilitation, we're looking for rehabilitation. I'm on disability, and he's a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. Sir?
Thank you for even mentioning.
Could I get your address again?
410 North Poston. I have them up here. I can give them to you after the meeting. She is at 410 North Poston Circle. He's at 190 North Poston Circle.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans? So talk to us about the next steps from here on out for public understanding, as well as our new council members that are going through this for the first time.
Sure. So, town staff has been discussing several, several potential projects and ways to use this funding, and before I move on, I wanted to ask our town manager if he had anything to add. That's okay?
Absolutely.
No, ma'am. I mean, you've, you've provided the information to council with regard to the recommended project and what that means. When I was approached by Jennifer and our Public Works Department, the interesting thing about the synergy provided is their applied project is to fix the ADA and sidewalk issues that are adjacent to the Florence K8 school, which were listed in our Safe Routes to School Plan as things that needed to be repaired. So they essentially use the information from the Safe Routes to School Plan and figure that that would be a good way to, to put these funds to use to, the Department of Housing calls that barrier removal projects. So fixing existing known ADA issues so that folks that have disabilities can, can have access to, to those public improvements.
And just to add on to that, to give a tiny bit more detail, 38 ramps were identified in this area, and it's the same service area where we completed a waterline project, actually, right now, we're about to. And so that area serves, has about 92 residents in the general area, and as Mr. Billingsley said, it does, it is included in the area surrounding the school. So there's 38 ramps that are, do not meet any standards for ADA, and so those would be removed and replaced with current standardized ADA ramps. So that's what the, the town staff is suggesting, and so later on in this agenda, there will be two more agenda items. One, we will ask for approval of a resolution to apply for that project, and the second agenda item is to approve a resolution that will commit matching funds to the project.
Okay, thank you. Council, are there any questions?
I have a question. Don't we have a section over here by our post office that is also not ADA compliant?
There is a section of sidewalk there, and I'm sure there's probably sections throughout the town core area. We focused on the area that's surrounding the K8 school. For one thing, that we, that area has already had a special survey conducted last year, so we know that the population in that area meets the low to mod income standard for the grant, and we, the, the issues with the ramps were documented in the Safe Routes to School study, so that was the primary basis for using, or doing the project in that area.
I just find that interesting because we know that that problem exists over here by the post office, something that all of our citizens use, and they, we've got people in wheelchairs that can't get to the post office because there's things that are blocking them that need to be moved, barriers. So I'm just wondering why that's not part of this, or why we're only looking right at the school. You said that's because that's already been surveyed and done, but, I mean, if, in my opinion, if we're going to suggest a, a project, we should make sure that before we suggest a project, that we've looked at all the projects that need to be done, so that when we suggest a project, we're suggesting the one that needs to be done priority. So we should, for me, we should be prioritizing things, but making sure that we are all aware of more than just the 32 sidewalks that need to be done, that there's however many, because I don't know how many sections of our town aren't ADA compliant.
Mr. Billingsley, can you jump in there?
I think I can help. So there's, there's several reasons why, and I hope that, that everyone in the audience and, and on TV can follow my logic. For years and years, the town of Florence has partnered with a separate city, the town of Winkelman, to where we rotate back and forth every other year for application. So last year was our year for application. We had a project that was prioritized, and it was an extension of our 12-inch water main replacement project. A special income survey is required as part of the grant because the, the basic data provided in the census doesn't give Florence the ability to qualify for these funds. So we physically have to go door to door and do a survey, which takes a couple of months, two to, two to three months to complete, and then the process of submitting that to the state and the federal government for their review. So we went through that process last year for the project that's currently under construction. We did not know that what was going to happen on the CD, CDBG side of funding was going to happen this year. So when, when the county got designated, and when CAG started losing entities, and the funds changed, as well as the options to go after the funds, we were left with a much smaller dollar amount. I think it's around $92,000?
$91,000.
$91,000 to work with, and an impossible timeframe by which to get the clearance necessary to apply, because we weren't planning on applying this year, and, and for all intent and purposes, we weren't going to apply this year. So that left us in a position where we have very limited projects to apply for. So from the staff's perspective, it is fortuitous that we already had the low to mod survey that was already approved by the state and we're able to use, and that the project was included in a recent study that shows the, the need for the project in terms of a barrier removal because of the Safe Routes to School Study. To answer the councilwoman's question, there are many, probably hundreds of ADA ramps that are not up to current standard in Florence. This is the only area that we could have applied for and met the timeframes that are necessary due to the constraints that we have.
So then my next question is going to be, if we open this up to the public to apply for the grant to make repairs that they need desperately done to their house, are they aware of the time constraints? What, what information did Mrs. Vargas and Mr. Mack have to provide? Did they need to provide estimates of what it was going to cost? Like, what did they need to provide so that they have a fair shot at this $91,000?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, the program works like this. We recommend one project, and we apply for one project, and so staff is recommending to do the ADA ramp project at this time. We would not do a housing rehabilitation program with this particular amount of funding, so it would be either or at this juncture. So there's no, in the way housing rehabilitation goes, there is a qualification process that is led by town staff, and we solicit people to apply for housing rehabilitation assistance, but they have to meet certain income thresholds and so forth to be eligible to apply for, for that program, and all of it would be managed, the, the construction project itself is managed by town staff or a consultant.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
I think that was sort of half my question, because I did hear Ms. Vargas present at the planning and zoning. I was wondering how the public can be assured that they're going to get some funding on situations like this. Do we have to wait till next year?
That is the prerogative of the town council. If you decide to apply for funding for the ADA ramp improvements, then that's what we would use this, or do with the money this year, and then next, possibly next year, we could apply for housing rehabilitation funding.
So you can't split it. You can't say, say they gave us a bid and total, they're, they're needing $20,000. We can't do their project for $20,000 and apply the rest to the other project that we were, if we approved the 32 and did as many as we could with what was left?
It's possible, but our experience with housing rehabilitation, which we did four years ago, was that one rehab cost about $91,000. So we're looking at what is the largest benefit to the community. So, you know, you may have at least 100 residents in one area that can benefit from ADA ramps and that type of improvement, whereas if you did, you know, limited housing rehabilitation projects, say limited to roofs, or electrical or plumbing and that sort of thing, possibly you could do three, maybe three, possibly four rehabilitation projects with $91,000.
Okay. I do, and the public hearing is still open. I do see Ms. Vargas's hand up. Ms. Vargas, come on up.
Yes, I forgot to say that I have been waiting five years for this grant. I appealed last year, and I filed a new application, and my income, since I'm on Medicare and Arizona State Retirement, only goes up, my Medicare only goes up 3% per year. So my income hasn't changed that much, but I did submit all my income tax statements. I just want to state that I have been waiting five years. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans, do you have her information over the past five years?
She submitted it last year, but we did not solicit it nor really accept it, because we do not have an active housing rehabilitation program. We only accept applications when we have funding available and an active program.
Okay, anything about the years prior? Because I, I don't recall it, so I just...
The last time we used CDBG funds for housing rehabilitation was about, was four years ago, so that would have been 2000, it was a 2014 fiscal year grant, and I believe Ms. Vargas did have an application in for that grant round. I was not the grants person at that time. I came in after the construction started with those projects, so we had...
Gilbert was, correct?
Ernie.
Ernie, Ernie. I apologize. I was trying to, because he sat over there.
And if you don't mind me adding, Mayor, I just wanted to say that we did hold the required first and second, or this being the second public hearing for this grant application round. So we fulfilled all of those meeting requirements and solicited public input. We also had newspaper advertisements and posted in the required locations.
Okay, thank you. Has Mr. Mack gone through that process and submitted anything, or is this the first time we're hearing?
No, ma'am. This will be the first time.
Okay. I would like to see understanding the information that was presented this evening from our staff is in the future, bringing in, I'll call you up in one moment, ma'am. If you just raise your hand just once, I'll, okay, come on up. Okay, that's okay. That's, no, it's all right.
It could have been more than four years ago then, in that case.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from staff and from the input is we do not have it set up towards housing at this time.
Correct.
I also understand that in the future, as early as this coming, you know, 2020 fiscal year, 2021, will be under Pinal County, and if I remember correctly, we're looking at about $335,000 being able to utilize towards a program. Is that correct?
I don't believe that number has been determined. My understanding that at a minimum, we'll have the $91,000 per year, but we'll probably have more opportunities.
Okay. Do you have any additional insight, Mr. Billingsley?
So, I've met with the county several times, and obviously, the county came in and presented two meetings ago. Their intent is to set a base amount, as Jen just said, with the ability through population numbers to, to add to that base amount, but the other side that Pinal County is seriously looking at is they're going to get a much larger sum than they have in the past. So for the last 20 years, the county has gotten the same amount as the cities, even though they have far more population. Now that they manage their own funds, they're going to get several million dollars instead of $190,000. So the county's intent is to try and make a larger impact by doing regional projects in cooperation with cities. So regional infrastructure projects to help economic development and those types of things as, as part of the CDBG program going forward.
And am I also correct in understanding that when you're talking about the CDGB grant, it's a grant, it's not guaranteed that you're going to get it, so you have to make sure that you have to put, and I'm not talking about people coming to the meeting asking for it, I'm talking about us as a town applying for it. We have to make sure it's justified, that it's gone through the process, and that we have all the documentation to move forward. Is that correct?
That's pretty much correct. It's not a competitive grant, so the money is ours if we follow the rules.
Okay.
And there are many rules. So, it, we have to adhere to the public input process. It needs to, the project itself needs to fit within their parameters. So we could do infrastructure projects, and we can replace, you know, pipes and water lines and sidewalks and all of that, but we can't use that funding for, say, equipment that would be replaced on a more frequent basis. So there's all these nuances to the program, so we have to be diligent in the type of projects we use the funding for, and try to get the maximum benefit from those projects.
Two more questions. Talk to me about the housing component and what would need to be put in in order to pursue that in the, like, future?
We can certainly pursue that in the future. What we have been doing in the last couple of CDBG rounds is that we're looking at the state's five-year plan and how they spend their funding, and over 50% of, of the CDBG funding is spent on infrastructure projects, so we've been, we've been in line with their priorities. The housing rehabilitation projects, they spend roughly a quarter of their funds on housing. So we certainly have the opportunity to start up a housing rehabilitation program again, and there might be other types of funding. And there might be other types of funding that we could apply for. I think we would just need, you know, council direction and that be a priority for our community.
Okay. And also, if housing is set up, is there anything in place that says, you know, you have to live there for X amount of years after improvements are done?
So for... There are certain thresholds of grant funds that require easements or deeds of trust and that sort of thing that can range from five years to 15 years. And so that can be attached to the property depending on how much public funds are spent on a particular project. There's... Again, qualification... The qualification process is rather stringent. And so you have to have... It has to be an owner-occupied home. It cannot be a rental home. The person has to be low-income, usually senior, 62 and over, and so forth and so on. So with a certain threshold of income each year, whether it's, you know, from retirement, social security, and other assets.
Okay. I would like to see us, you know, in line and also bringing back that component. I agree, you know, in regards to infrastructure and having the most impact for our community as a whole. But I also know that there's needs within our community that we want to, you know, be able to help out when we can. I see some members in the audience this evening that also have some pretty key connections that they hopefully can reach out to them and see if there's any way we can have some, you know, assistance or support.
Absolutely.
I have a question real quick. So now going back to... Obviously, there's the housing option and then the, I guess, mass population option as far as the sidewalks are concerned. Can we break that up? I know we've asked that before. But is maybe we say X dollar amount per house cap or something like that? Or we could still break it up a little bit smaller so we can still maximize where there's still some projects doing on the housing part of it? But then we could also still work on some of the sidewalks? Is there... I guess, what's the components? Is there any flexibility with that funding?
There is flexibility, I believe. I think you probably would want to look at the overall dollar amount that we have to work with. It probably will not go very far if we try to do both. But I believe it's possible.
I just think for me, and either I'm just totally not understanding what you're saying. We have two citizens sitting here applying for a grant that it sounds like you're saying they don't qualify for because we don't have a housing rehabilitation program. So I'm trying to understand why our public thinks that they can apply for this grant. So either I'm with them and I'm just misunderstanding something or we are misrepresenting what this grant is for. Because I hate to waste people's time going through applying five years, two applications, however many times, when you know they're not going to get it because we don't have that program. I'd rather just tell them from the get-go, "Housing doesn't qualify at this point." And then we can figure out, "How do we get programs that qualify for housing?" But I'm all about saving people's time and making sure that we are clear in what we're saying and presenting to the public. So I have two people who are sitting here and they need help and they applied for something they thought they might have a shot at. But then we're saying, "No, you don't have a shot because that's not what this is for." So just help me clear this.
Let me try to clarify. So over the past four years, there have been times people have called to try to apply. And for a while there, we did take applications, but we did not qualify them. We just held the applications. And I have always been very clear, let me say explicitly clear, that we do not have funding to support this program at this time or any time within the last four years. And I don't know how much more clear I can make that. This hearing and the first public hearing was to solicit input on how to use the funds. It wasn't really an application process or anything like that. It was just to give the public an opportunity to express how they would like to see those CDBG dollars used in our community. So I think we're... We might get tied up on specific words, but I just would like to make it clear that we are not accepting applications. People can drop them off, but we're not accepting them. And we do... Because of the fact that we don't have funding for an active program.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson, did you have anything?
I would just like to point out that Ms. Evans made the same point at the Planning and Zoning that there was not any funds available. And the other thing I just caught, you said it had to be 62 or older?
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Vargas would not qualify then?
Well, I think I'm... I probably need to add to that. There's also a component for disability as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I think she did express that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Adams, come on up if you'd like.
And I would like to mention that Ms. Adams was at our first public hearing and we did receive her input.
Hi.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I've been involved on the periphery of CDBG grant monies used for housing before. I know when our town manager first came on board, we had the privilege and honor of handing over the keys to one of those houses. I know two people who were recipients of this. It drastically changed their lives, but not just their lives. It's a fallacy to be counting one single person's house and not understanding. You have eliminated blight in my neighborhood. You have eliminated just a horrible sight to see. I sit on the Historic District Commission where we are fighting absentee landlords letting their buildings fall down. We have two citizens trying to keep their homes up. And I really would strongly advocate for a housing component, if not this year. Every year, we have CDBG funding because where else do they go? Infrastructure is something we cover as town. There are other places for infrastructure dollars. I know there's never enough. But where do people go who are trying to keep up their homes who just simply can't keep up? I think that's what CDBG should be all about. And I think you should consider the impact to the community of doing these homes, not just the individual person. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input. And I feel that we are on the same page in regards to bringing back that housing component.
I have a question for, I guess, the town manager. For these handicap ramps, do we get any federal funding to put in handicap ramps from ADA or anybody like that?
We don't. We don't receive direct federal funds of any type for those types of improvements. If we were to repave, so physically remove, redesign and repave... So for example, First Street, we're required by federal law, unfunded mandate, we're required by federal law to make sure that all those improvements are ADA accessible. But no, there's not a grant that we can apply for or direct federal funding that we can receive for that. A lot of communities utilize things like community development block grants for that type of funding. The thing that I would add to Jennifer's answer to help explain is when you have a housing program, it's not as simple as we just put together a grant and we hire a contractor and they do work. We would have to hire... Either hire people to run that housing program and to handle all that paperwork, which we went away from that. And so we have an individual that supervises our grants program now that does other things. So we would have to have employees directly to oversee that, the paperwork, the construction, bidding the contractors, et cetera, on those individual properties and then doing the compliance and the ongoing paperwork. Or what Florence had done a few years ago is hire a consultant to do it. One of the concerns that the council at that time had when we provided the information was that a substantial portion of the funds was not going into the houses. A substantial portion of the money that came to Florence was going to pay consultants to manage the projects and do the paperwork. And so the monies weren't actually going to the individuals. They were going to a site entity that was providing those services. So years ago, CDBG used to be almost entirely housing rehab. Now it gets reduced more and more all the time just because of how labor-intensive it is and the paperwork and the bang that you get for your buck with that. So I hope that helps.
It does, thank you. Any more questions, comments, or concerns from council? From the public? Because the public comment period is still open. Question, comments, or concerns? And closing that comment period. Technology is so much easier and I am working off of a paper agenda, so I appreciate you bearing with me. Item B is public hearing to receive citizens' comments on property tax levy of the Town of Florence and first reading of ordinance number 676-19. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020. Mr. Ray Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council. Every year, the town reviews the levy and rate. If the primary property levy increases, then we must hold a truth in taxation hearing. So I'm here tonight to let you know that the town intends to increase that... The levy for fiscal year 2019, 2020. However, the primary tax rate will actually see a decrease from this year from last year. So last year was $1.10 roughly. That rate's going to decrease to about $1.07 this year. However, the tax levy will increase about 5.62%, and that's due to the amount of assessed valuation that increased. So the total increase in terms of dollars would be $62,130. And just to let council know that the revenue that this would generate would be used to pay general government expenses, primarily police and fire.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, not at this time.
Mr. Billingsley, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I am going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Council, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I do get a lot of questions from constituents regarding the fact that we're increasing the levy, but we're decreasing the tax rate. Could you kind of explain that in layman's terms?
Yeah, so basically, there's two ways of generating the revenue. One way is to increase the rate. In this particular case, we didn't need to do that because the amount of... The total valuation of all the properties increased. So that's why we're actually decreasing the rate because the amount of valuation that increased takes care of that portion that we're looking for in terms of the revenue.
Where do we get the number of the assessed valuation that we base that levy on?
It comes from Penal County.
From the county assessor's office?
Yes, the county assessor's office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. This is not an action item. This will be brought back at our next meeting in July. And if there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Item C is public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the secondary property tax for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Streetlight Improvement District Number 1, Anthem at Merrill Ranch Streetlight Improvement District Number 2, and Anthem at Merrill Ranch Streetlight Improvement District 3. The first reading of ordinance number 677-19, which is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Streetlight Improvement Districts 1, 2, and 3, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020. Mr. Ray Sanchez.
So again, this is a public hearing for the Merrill Ranch Street Light Improvement District 1, 2, and 3. For the last several years, we have not levied a secondary tax in districts. The district had sufficient funds to pay for the electrical costs. However, we do need to increase the rate in District 3. So I'm proposing that we increase it to 12 cents, so .1207 per $100 of net assessed valuation. So I have an example. So there's an example provided that for a $100,000 home, the tax collected would be about $12.07. For a $200,000 home, it would be about $24.14. And for a $300,000 home, it would... The tax collected would be about $36.21. If anyone had any questions?
All right. Is there any member of council that has any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have light districts in other parts of the town?
It's my understanding that the districts that we have, we provided a map for you. Those are the areas where these districts are located.
They're just...
Did you have anything... Was there any Anthem area? Other than this map here?
The town currently has three streetlight improvement districts. Council in the very near future will be considering two more in District 4 and District 5, which are the... They're getting ready to come to council at this time. So having streetlight improvement districts is one of the things included in the development agreement for Anthem, Merrill Ranch, as well as Merrill Ranch, as well as other development agreements that the town did with developments in the town that have been platted but have not been built yet in order to cover the cost to install the streetlights and pay for the power costs associated with those streetlights.
So, Mr. Billingsley, because I was unable to look at the map in the detail, what's helpful for me is to be able to see the street names. The units aren't something that I read very well, so could you help me out there? And I apologize, I would have, you know, asked earlier, but we didn't have time. And going over this agenda last week with Lisa was already time-consuming.
So the districts are 1, 2, and 3. District 1, and I'm colorblind, so you're going to have to bear with me. District 1 looks like it's yellow. District 2 looks like it's purple. And District 3 looks maroon. So Sun City Anthem would be covered in District 1 and half of District 3. And Parkside would be shown in purple here and then the southern half of District 3. The two new districts will be to the south and east of the existing districts that are there. Mayor, your house specifically is in District 2. The reason why we had... Have not levied a tax for the streetlight improvement districts is the council, when the original CFDs in these districts were set up, levied at the maximum rate for three to four years. And the funds collected far outpaced the expenditures on an annualized basis. And so we have not levied in many years. But specifically District 3, this time, we forecast a shortfall. And so it's about that time where the levies will start to occur again, this time in District 3, but I'm sure in the other districts forthcoming.
So District 3 is the new builds that are happening right now, correct?
District 3 is half of Sun City, but it's where a lot of the new builds are occurring in Sun City right now.
Okay.
As well as where the commercial center is and where the new builds are occurring from D.R. Horton.
Okay, now I can understand that.
Yes.
And it's also important then, now that I understand it, where I remember in the other districts, 1 and 2, it was higher because you have the cost of the actual infrastructure that's going in the ground that's providing the light into the community. And then once you have that money essentially set aside, it's also paying for the usage and the repairs is necessary.
Absolutely. That's very astute. Obviously, in those areas, as they've been developing, section by section, subdivision by subdivision, there's a whole lot of infrastructure going into those areas that, once we accept the streets, becomes the town's... that, once we accept the streets, becomes the town's infrastructure. Whereas in District 3, a lot of that has sat fallow for many years and developments just starting to pick up at this time.
Look, is this just for the cost of the infrastructure? This is not the monthly light bills?
This is the monthly light bills, council member, as well, yes. And repairs, maintenance, et cetera, yes, sir.
Well, who pays for the light bills for downtown?
The town, but we have far less lights in the downtown and in any of the historic areas than exist in the Anthem area.
What about the gardens?
You know, I don't even know if there are streetlights in the gardens, to be honest with you. We're going to have to check into the gardens and see how many city-funded streetlights are in the gardens.
It just doesn't seem right to me that the town pays streetlights for part of the town and not the rest of the town.
All right, so this is public comment period. Is there anybody else that has any other public comments? Council? Councilmember Hughes?
I agree with councilmember Anderson. I don't think it's right. I think that the town shouldn't be paying for downtown.
So what I can kind of add, because it might be pre-time, before any of us were on the board, before a lot of our staff was here, some of our staff was here when development agreements came through and the agreements were made of how the community was to be funded. One of the questions that has been asked in the past that might be helpful to present again for our new members and for public as well is what would happen to the community should the SLID essentially go away, understanding that areas 1, 2, and soon-to-be 3 have so many, so much infrastructure in regards to light, maintenance, and usage in regards to the other areas of town. Was that clear enough of a question, or did I ramble?
I think so, and I have answered this question before, so I think I'm prepared. The first, I'm going to have three answers to the question, three different parts. First part is the decisions on how the subdivision was built and the infrastructure provided would have been very different if the expectation was that the town was going to pay for the maintenance and the ongoing power bills for all those lights. There would be far less lights, to the point where we might have been built in these areas, like some of the subdivisions that have been built in Coolidge, Maricopa, in the ex-urban areas outside of Casa Grande, where there isn't street lighting. And they essentially have a dark-skY situation.
It's also similar if you went just north of our community to Magic Ranch or Oasis at Magic Ranch.
You would have far less lighting, because the town would have no ability to come up with the revenues to pay for that additional lighting and the street lighting as it exists there. Second portion of that question is, other communities have been faced with similar issues, I believe, surprise in Buckeye, Lisa, we researched before. And they essentially, they had a part of their town that had streetlight improvement districts. And they came to the council and they said, "We don't want to have these districts." So the town was in a very difficult position. It was shut off the streetlights or come out of general fund to come up with those additional funds for those light bills. And ultimately, it was decided to continue forward with the SLID, and SLID paid for those light bills. The third thing I would say is, if we did not have the SLIDs, it would really be a revenue issue for the Town of Florence in terms of our ability to come out of the general fund to pay for the maintenance and the power for those lights. It would be a big hit to our general fund.
Just for the record, I had brought this up before. So I already knew the answers to all these questions, because I...
I think all of us did.
...agree with you that I don't like the idea of the SLID and the fact that we're paying for it, but then we also pay for the rest of town's lights. So I agree with you, I just knew the answer to this question.
Well, I don't object to the SLID. I just think if we have it in one part of town, we ought to have it in all parts of town.
Yep.
But that has to be something that's voted on. And so, and correct me if I misspeak, please, because I have...
You're absolutely right.
I've had all of the same questions. And I think we all, when we were elected, said, "Hey, why do we have X, Y, and Z?" And in other areas, they don't. When Anthem was developed as a master-planned community, part of that development agreement said, "These are essentially the amenities we're going to offer, and this is the funding mechanism of how it's going to be paid for it." If we were to, you know, dissolve that...
Well, I'm not saying dissolve it.
But we couldn't impose it in other areas of town without taking it to a vote for the citizens that would want to be a part of that.
Madam Mayor, excellent job answering the question clearly. You've been paying attention. When we've had these conversations before, the only correction I would make is, it's not an election, it's a signature petition. So, I mean, literally, we would pick an area, and we would have to go door-to-door. There's a valuation component, and there's a property ownership component. If you would like to try to do that in the future, that's something that we could try, I would tell you, as your advisor, good luck getting a community to tax themselves to pay for their streetlights when they don't currently pay for it. So the way that the Town of Florence set it up was new development with new amenities. Districts would be utilized for not only constructing the infrastructure, but ongoing maintenance of the infrastructure.
There's a lot of money that flows through Anthem at Merrill Ranch and its community. Each home that's built there is assessed a $3,000 sum, special assessment, that I think I have a grasp on what it's for. But then, when conversations like this happen, I'm like, "Wait a minute, what is that for? And who does that money go to?" Each home, per quarter, pays, on average, we'll say, $380 per quarter in HOA fees. Let's estimate, there are 7,000 homes. $380 times 4 is somewhere around $1,500. Multiply that by 7,000 homes, that's a heck of a lot of money. Then on top of that, every time a home sells, they get their capital improvement fees, they get their HOA fee to transfer documents, and then there is a quarter of a 1% charge of the sales price to every home that sells in Anthem as a resale. Not just on their first resale, every resale of that home. So when you put all that together, that's an awful lot of money that's going through there. And I, as a homeowner in Anthem, assumed that my HOA fees were covering the cost of the lights, the park, the pool, the enormous salaries of people that are staffed there. So I'm just kind of like, "Wow, now you want more money from us?"
So just to correct, HOA is totally different than Town, and I just want to make sure public knows that, too. The Town of Florence does not operate the facilities there, they don't pay...
Right, I understand that.
Right, but when you're speaking and you're saying, you know, "We pay X, Y, and Z," when you bought a home in Anthem, it was clearly communicated, because I've purchased two homes in Anthem, and you're in real estate, so you see it a lot more than I do, actually, that, you know, if you're having a new build, everybody has their impact fees. And I believe the impact fees in other areas of our town are actually more, is that correct?
No, we have the same impact fees throughout all the town for new development. But I really appreciate councilmember Cortez bringing that up and your clarification, Mayor, with regard to what the towns... Oh, that's true. Chris was just pointing out to me, yes, because we don't have the utility in that area, there isn't a water and sewer impact fee. But of the impact fees charged, they're the same for everyone everywhere in the city.
Right, but downtown pays more because they have to pay for...
Because of the water and sewer impact.
...infrastructure.
Yes. To your point, Ms. Cortez, I think it's important, it's a good point of clarification and education, to kind of talk about the different districts that the town oversees. We've talked about streetlight improvement districts, and I think everybody understands what that compensates for now. Let's talk a little bit about the special assessment. So that is the $3,000 fee that you were speaking to earlier. That specifically goes to building the infrastructure in the individual parcels of the subdivision. So if you were to look at a map of Anthem, there are a whole bunch of different parcels. I think there's over 80 different parcels, just in the part that's currently developed. The infrastructure internal to those parcels, so the street and the sidewalk and what have you goes to your house, that's paid through the special assessments to pay for that infrastructure. We also talk about general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds are the funds that go to pay for the regional infrastructure, so the regional routes, the routes that are used to access the subdivision go through the subdivision, so Merrill Ranch Parkway, Felix Road, et cetera. And so those are the three different types of funding that the town assists, because they're separate districts in overseeing. Streetlights, the special assessments, and the general obligation bonds. Thank you for helping me clarify that.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the audience that has anything that they would like to ask or comment upon, please do so at this time. Any additional members of council? Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Sanchez?
I just wanted to let you know that you may, on your agenda item, may say that it's a public hearing and action required, but this is just a public hearing, we'll bring this back on the 15th.
Yes. All right, item D is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and discussion approval/disapproval of resolution number 1700-19, which is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Mr. Ray Sanchez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to inform you guys that the final budget has not, it hasn't changed since the tentative budget. So originally, the tentative, we approved the $45,251,331. And then, on the 17th, you approved the expenditure limitation of $28,938,392. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that nothing has changed. However, we recently learned that some of our projected revenues for state shared revenue is actually going to come in slightly lower than what we had projected. So I just wanted to make council aware of that.
All right, thank you for that. All right, I am going to open this up to public comment. Is there any member of the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding our budget? Members of council? Okay. This will come before us upon, at the next meeting, or we're doing it today? Okay. Hey, our action is all over the place on this agenda.
The action boxes on the agenda items has been sporadic, but the wording on the agenda is actually correct. So if we follow the agenda, we will be fine. This particular item is required to have a roll call vote. So after someone makes a motion, someone seconds it, we will need to have a roll call vote, okay?
With that, we need a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 1700-19.
Second. Motion and a second, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
The item is passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
And I want to thank all of members of council that participated on the Budget Committee, as well as staff for going through that process, so thank you. Item E, United Way presentation by Mr. Alan Villalobos, Chief Executive Officer for the United Way of Penale County. And I also see Mr. Brayden Biggs in the audience as well, with Penale, United Way.
Madam Mayor, council members, I just wanted to take advantage of this time and introduce myself. I am the new kid in the block. I've been in my position for two months, and I'm just excited to be part of the United Way of Penale County. I just wanted to say that, because it's more important for me to present to you what United Way actually does here for Penale County, and specifically for Florence. For that reason, I actually brought our guru, when it comes to programs at United Way, our community programs manager, Brayden Biggs. But before that, I'd like to introduce my wife of 30 years, Evelyn, who's in the public. And she's putting up with me, and she's visiting towns as I go and present myself and introduce myself to the community. And also, I want to thank you for allowing me to use the time of Lisa Garcia. She's the Secretary of the Board for the United Way of Penale County, so she's volunteering her time for us. So we're very fortunate to have her. So for no further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Brayden.
Thank you, Alan. Guru, I am by no means, I don't ever say I'm a guru in anything related to what I do, because it changes on a daily basis. That being said, I am happy to say, Mayor Walters, members of council, this is not an item for action or agenda, so you guys can kind of relax a little bit. I just get to present to you all of the great things that we're doing. Can I use the clicker, Lisa? Okay. So we came before you guys a few months ago and just kind of wanted to provide an update as Alan is making his rounds around each one of the councils and communities, introducing himself, and to also just kind of put ourselves back in front of you guys, as well as the members of the community. So House Florence lives united through various reasons. Oh. So our Reading by Third Grade Initiative, I don't know what happened with the winding of top, but one of those opportunities is through the Florence Reading Committee. So over 60 sock puppets, 50 literacy kits have been donated to Head Start and mentoring through young kids through reading opportunities, partnering with opportunities like the Town of Florence, the Florence Women's Club, the Rotary Club, and the Unified School District. So on the left, you get to see one of our sock puppets that were created by members of our community, and on the right, those were through Florence, the Florence Women's Club. We also do, we did a family volunteer day. See, now this is going to test my memory of what the headlines are. So we did a family volunteer day back, I believe, in September, where 10 volunteers donated about three and a half hours of their time each, valued at about $736 in labor, where they bagged 125 literacy kits and created 48 sock puppets. That was held right here in the Town of Florence at the community center and library. And that, of course, we did partner with the Town of Florence and Disney. And I like to say that the little sock puppet in the middle there is one of Sheriff Lamb, because the child who created that really loves our Penale County Sheriff's officers and really loves Sheriff Lamb. So they kind of emulated a lamb, and the joke became that that was sock puppet Sheriff Lamb, which I believe he now has, actually, I think we gave that to him. Also in September, we, as you guys may know, September is Hunger Action Awareness Month, and then October is Hunger Action Month. So partnering with the generous Florence staff members, we had the Day of Florence in Action, where 40 of your guys' staff members donated two hours each of their time at about $1,975 in total labor. And we actually packed 10,000 meals. So I know that says 5,000, but we were lucky enough to somehow have a mix-up happen, where we got an additional 5,000 meals that we were able to pack due to a small accounting error. But that allowed our community to be able to pack those 10,000 meals, which there went out to the various communities. One of those, actually, that happened right around the same time that the Coolidge Food Bank got broken into, and then a wealth of resources went into replenishing that due to that wealth of resources being put into that Superior's Food Bank and the Copper Corridor actually started losing some of their opportunities that they got. So luckily, we were able to kind of not only replenish Coolidge, but also replenish Florence due to a happy accident that all happened at the same time. And that food that our employees created was then distributed to the EFELTS program, which is the Elks Feeding Empty Little Tummies, the Florence Unified School District for their Weekend Backpack Program, the Superior Food Bank, the Apache Junction School District for their Weekend Backpack Program. And then the leftovers were taken to the local churches to make into their kits and go into their opportunities there. So as you know, of course, we have our Heat Relief Network every year. In years past, prior to 2018, each community kind of did their own water drive and their own thing there. In 2018, we partnered... In 2018, we partnered with not only the United Way of Pinal County, but the Pinal County Government, as well as the Central Arizona Association of Governments, and then the Maricopa Association of Governments. Through that, we created over 70 partners, collected and distributed 39 pallets of water. We work with the National Weather Service to issue heat-related warnings, and we've collaborated with APS and SRP for high heat days and cooling stations. This year, in 2019, we've had a little bit of a wild year so far. We've had a couple wildfires throughout Pinal County. And as we partake in the COAD, which is the Communities Organizing an Act of Disasters, we have been able to help get water in Gatorades, electrolyte-style drinks, as well as boxes of individually wrapped snacks to our first responders throughout Pinal County to not only help fight the wildfires, but just help to be emergency responders in general. So through that, we actually set a goal in general for the water drive this year of 100 partners and 50 pallets of water. As of this morning, we were at 55 pallets of water altogether. So we are actively seeking to grow that. But 25 pallets of water, which are still being distributed tomorrow, I'm actually distributing four pallets of water to Oracle. And on Wednesday, we're bringing about four to five pallets of water to our neighbors in Hila County to replenish, as they just recently had their evacuation. And so we're trying to get some supplies there to replenish them as our neighbors. So 25 went to that COAD piece, the Emergency Management piece, and we're getting another 50 out into the community. Even just on Friday, Harrah's Auction Casino donated four pallets of water. We've had community donors with the funding to be able to do another six pallets of water specifically to Pinal County Sheriff's Office, so that our sheriff's officers and deputies can have water in their cars. So it is a huge network, and anybody interested in either donating or becoming a partner can always reach out to us. For our FFN program, which is one of our largest programs in our education categories, we currently have over 300 enrolled family childcare providers throughout Pinal County. That is made up of grandparents, other kinship care providers, foster parents, and those who run childcare businesses from their homes. That is funded through our state agency, First Things First, for up to 350 providers. And we obviously do have room to grow in that. Within those training cohorts, we provide play and learn events, CPR, advanced first aid classes, and business workshops, childcare providers for those childcare business providers. And then those business workshops are somebody who might do an in-home daycare service that might be looking to open up a brick and mortar. So that therefore creates economic development. We also do quarterly conferences with over 100 providers of four to six hours of learning through that as well. So there's a lot of engagement with our clients there. This just kind of gives you a breakdown of where all of our clients actually are. So you can see Apache Junction has 24, Casa Grande has 61, the actual Town of Florence has nine, Eloy has three. And that does continue to grow as well. So one of our more substantial programs, at least on the family financial stability side, is our VIDA program, that Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. While we don't actually have a site specifically here in Florence year-round, we do have a site in Santan Valley, as well as a pop-up site in Florence and Coolidge next door to us. Those three different locations do serve clients in the Florence area. So all together across Pinal County, we saw 1,300 countywide taxes prepared. We issued about $1.3 million. And actually, as of last week, I've learned that number, it's actually higher. It's $1.5 million in refunds, with about $462,000 of that being in those earned income tax credit refunds. So again, that low to moderate income, single family, or single parent with one or two children, and maybe a grandparent raising their grandchild. We can reasonably assume that about 100 of the clients that we assisted between the proper Florence, the Santan, and then our Coolidge site, about 100 of those were Florence residents. So we are expanding that and always looking to grow to be able to assist more Florence residents. The two charts that you see on the bottom right-hand side, the first one is for the My Free Taxes program. So out of 1,227 counties across the United States that participate, the Pinal County United Way participates in that as well. And we currently rank 180 out of 1,227 for e-file. Now again, that program, that My Free Taxes, is similar to like your H&R Block, your TurboTax, something along that line, where the client can go on and prepare their taxes themselves. So we're 180 on that. And of that, we rank 143 out of 1,227 on the amount of EITC clients that go through that process as well. The one right beneath that is for the United Ways across the country who participate. So 839 United Ways across the country participate. And we rank 179 for e-file and 151 for EITCs. So again, we're in the upper 10% for both of those. I'm a little competitive for those who don't know, and I want to CSB number one eventually. So that's my goal. The chart on the left-hand side here lists each one of our locations throughout Pinal County. And as you can see, again, that $1.3 million in refunds, that's actually about 1.5 now as we get new data coming in. But you can see where all of our sites are and the various amounts of money that come into that. So one of our largest sites is Goodwill, which is in Casa Grande, $388,000 in total refunds there. The information on the right-hand side, now, all of these numbers are self-professed, with the exception of the last one. So the 181 clients identified themselves as veterans. 188 of our clients classified themselves as disabled in some way or another. And 413 of our clients this year were returning to us from last year. And then, of course, our total returns by city. Again, we can reasonably estimate through our three sites that Florence has about 100 returns. The reason that's so difficult to track is because it does not actually go off of zip code. It goes off of site. So we have to be able to say and look into that a little bit more heavily. So the way that we got that Florence member was we were actually polling our clients, saying, "Where do you live?" So what we can see based off of self-reporting and what they've allowed us to obtain is about 100 of our clients. So where we actually get our money from, this is always coming down to, as a nonprofit, we have to be accountable to our donors and the general public. So where we get our money from is through the annual giving campaigns, through special events, corporate sponsorships, grants, and government funding, community donors, and volunteers. So that breaks down into a couple different buckets here. So all together, the United Way of Pinal County's operating budget hovers at about $274,000. I wish it was 274 million. But it's $274,000. The undesignated dollars, the community impact dollars, is about $191,000, $192,000, which equates to about 70% of our total budget. The United Way, the UWPC designation is $30,959. So where that comes in is that, let's say you, as a donor, are specifically interested in homelessness work. You can designate your donation to that bucket of money. And that hovers, I believe, it's 11% of our total budget there. So that's $31,000. The PC agency designation, so the entire role of the United Way of Pinal County is twofold. One, it is to provide our own services. But the other is that we are the funder for every other nonprofit that is out there. So we currently work with 22 different nonprofits throughout Pinal County. And you, as the donor, through payroll deduction, have the opportunity to not only give to us, but let's say, give to your local Boys and Girls Club. So we designate through, $23,000 essentially comes through us and goes back out into the community to those local 22 agencies. Recently, the VIDA program, which has traditionally been funded by one donor at about $26,000, has actually been recently funded by the Pinal County Government. We submitted a grant to them in early May. We were awarded $30,000 of full funding to be able to embed that directly into Pinal County and be able to keep that program around. So we're very much looking forward to working with the county government on that, being able to expand that program and provide further impact into the community. And then, of course, we have our Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is about $1,822. So for that program, for a $30 sponsorship a year, a donor can actually sponsor one child to receive an age-appropriate book mailed directly to their house throughout the entire year, ages zero to five. There are four main areas in Pinal County that don't have access to our wonderful libraries like we have here in Florence. So it's specifically in Florence. And working with the Town of Florence staff, the town manager, and the town clerk, the UWPC did present to you guys back in mid-February. On April 17th, Brent and Lisa invited us to the Employee Appreciation Day, where we were able to present to the staff and actually accept and begin the payroll deduction process. So currently, eight members of your staff are contributing about $2,800 for the 2019-2020 campaign cycle. I'd like to point out, that's up from $52. So that's an increase of about 5,400%. It's a really good number. Let's see that keep going, right? So we're very grateful for that. And we do, of course, look forward to the continued partnership in Florence and across Pinal County in those opportunities. And then this is a list, and again, I apologize for the windings up there, but this is a list of our top 18 campaigns throughout the 2018-19 year. So we just ended that year yesterday, in fact. And these are the top 18 campaigns that occurred throughout that fiscal year. And of course, if anybody ever has questions, my contact information is there, as well as Alan's. And you are always free to contact us or touch base with us to get involved. So with that, I will open it up to your questions.
One part that I want to just give you an opportunity for everybody in the audience to have that information as well is on another slide, I saw text 313131 to UWPCgive.
Correct.
So why don't you tell everybody how that works?
Yeah, so as a donor, you can pull out your phone now, and you can text the number 313131 with the code or the message, UWPC, space, give, they're two separate words. And then that will shoot you back a link that you can click on, which will pull up to our donor page. And from there, you can choose to make a donation of any amount. We have a couple set amounts. You can choose your own amount. You can make a one-time donation. You can make a monthly, quarterly, I believe, all the way up to semi-annually contribution directly through your phone. You just enter in your credit card information. We do accept debit, credit, bank account, and Apple Pay. And of course, you can donate there, or of course, go to our website directly.
Perfect. I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted to give you an opportunity to say that, because a lot of times, people will see that and think, "Well, if I text it, it will automatically deduct."
It does not.
Right, so that was a great explanation that you gave, and that way Mark can get that information out as well.
Of course.
I know Town of Florence, we've really enjoyed partnering with you. You know, we were blessed with making the 10,000 meals, and we're looking forward to being able to continue to partner, as well as making the sock puppets was fun.
Yes.
Any members of council have any questions, comments? Councilmember Cortez?
First, I'd like to thank you again for another presentation. They're always great, and for all that you guys do for Florence and the surrounding areas in Pinal County. I have a couple questions. I noticed on social media, because I'm on there all the time, the peanut butter challenge. Why isn't Florence in that?
Yeah. So first off, thank you for following us on social media. And second of all, to those listening on TV or in the audience, we are on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. You can look us up by going to United, or typing in United Way of Pinal County, and you can find us. Please follow us. We're very, very active on all three of those platforms. The Peanut Butter and Jelly Drive was actually started in Apache Junction two years ago. They just completed their second year. And from that, the city of Casa Grande, or rather, the Casa Grande Elementary School District has kind of jumped on that bandwagon as well. And it's more or less turned in, again, I'm competitive and like to start that kind of stuff. It's more or less turned into now an intercity competition on who can raise the most peanut butter and jelly. The reason behind the Peanut Butter and Jelly Drive is for our school districts. So in Apache Junction, not only do we work with the Unified School District, but we have three, I'm sorry, two charter schools in that district as well. A lot of people don't realize that one in five children across Arizona come from a food insecure household. It's actually one in four here in Pinal County. So many of our school districts have a high number of McKinney-Bento children, which are displaced children, homeless children, or children who do come from that food insecure household. So we work directly with them to be able to ensure that our children don't go 72 hours without hunger from the time that they leave Friday afternoon to the time that they come back on Monday. So Apache Junction, two years ago, has started that drive, and they raised about 300 jars of peanut butter and jelly. This most recent year, we ran it from the start of April to the end of April. They raised 840 jars. They essentially tripled their entire donor contribution there. In Casa Grande, they've started it. The, Joetta Gonzalez, the superintendent there, said, "You know what? I want to set a goal of 1,300 jars." And that's their competition, is to be able to raise 1,300 jars. When I took that back to Apache Junction and said, "Hey, look, you've got competition," it really did start that. It is something we are looking to grow in each one of our communities. And I would love either the Town of Florence to help sponsor that, or work with our members on the school board, or superintendents, and everybody to kind of help create that competition. Everything raised stays in the community. It's essentially staff time that does that for such a great cause and highlighting such a great thing. Again, this goes back to the Feed Pinal, which was those 10,000 meals and things that all happened. That's the reason that we do it, is to ensure our children are fed. We know when our children aren't fed and aren't sustained properly nutrition-wise, they don't perform well in school. So I would love to work with you, or anybody that you may know in the community that wants to get that going, and throw you guys into the ring as well.
Well, I would love to challenge Apache Junction and Casa Grande on that, and show them that we can produce more peanut butter and jelly.
So we are creating what's now called the Golden Sandwich Trophy. I need to figure out how to make it, but as soon as I can make it, it's going to happen. So I can't wait to distribute the Golden Sandwich Trophy.
I'd like that to sit right here, please. And then, two more things. So you talked about the employee campaign.
Correct.
And that's a great program. Is it based on dollar amount, participation? Like, you're all about competition. So are our employees competing against someone? Do we have a goal? Like, what is the purpose of this one, other than to raise funds?
Yeah, so just kind of going back to the screen here, the 5,400% increase, I think that that's phenomenal, just going from $52 to $2,800. To me, to us, it's not the dollar number that matters. I mean, of course, dollars are great at the end of the day. I look at it as participation. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to kind of create that competition on which city has the most donors. Because it's not just necessarily the dollar amount, because that dollar amount is significant to you. One donor may be able to give $1,800, another may be able to only give $5. So having that opportunity, I would always encourage a participation. And I think it would be a wonderful thing to work with city staff to be able to come back and say, "Hey, you know what? 50% of your employees," and I don't know how many employees you all have, but I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to say 50% of your employees are donors in one way or another.
I'd like to see it be a competition between the departments. That'd be cool, and with the little charts in every building saying, "This is our participation percentage, and this is our goal 100%." And right now, we're at 10% for the Police Department, and the Fire Department's at 15%. And have that, and then have here in Town Hall, like, one big one that shows everybody who's winning. That might encourage more people to participate. And $5 is $5, and it adds up quick when everybody's participating. And then my last one is, because I'm all about community involvement and stuff like that, I, as a Realtor, know that I participate in different programs that help programs like yours get money. So one of the programs I participate in is the Hero's Home Advantage. So I'm able to give 10% of my commission back towards the closing costs of any veteran, any currently military, first responders, police, firefighters, nurses, teachers, anything like that that fits within that program. We're able to give 10% of that. So just a suggestion, you might want to look at how you can tap into the real estate industry to start generating some funds to come back towards you. That was just an idea I had as Brendan, as he was talking about the different programs that you have and the different partnerships. The real estate industry is a huge industry in every state, and definitely something you might want to tap into.
Absolutely. And I know, at least in Apache Junction, I don't know about the other communities, they have a yearly Realtor roundup, where they bring all of the Realtors in. And we do actually attend that, and generally talk about some of the work that we do. I know the school superintendents, the city manager usually attend that as well, to kind of talk about the great things happening in the community. Because as a Realtor, I'm sure you get questions on, you know, "Well, how are the schools, and how's the community, and what's being built, and what's going on?" And that's just one more way. You know, people do kind of want to know the social service side as well, and they want to know homelessness, or the various work that's going on. And actually, from that, a couple Realtors, I don't know if it's a part of the same thing, or if it's a dollar amount, but I know one Realtor thing, or if it's a, a dollar amount, but I know one Realtor in particular is, has said that if, if he buys or sells a home, and that referral comes from the United Way, or, or they bring in that, that postcard, then he'll donate five hundred dollars back to us. So if that's an opportunity that we have, then I, I definitely think it's, it's probably an untapped market, and I'd love to maybe even see like, the month of July is, is Realtor Give Back Month in Penal County. So thank you.
All right. Good conversations. Thank you again for your presentation.
Of course.
We appreciate partnerships. Item F is Special Recognition of Battalion Chief Jim Walter for completing the Manager Officer Program through the National Fire Academy, Mr. David Strayer.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, it gives me a great deal of pleasure tonight to recognize one of our members from Florence Fire and his completion of a very prestigious national level program. I'm going to ask him to come up and share a little bit about his experience, but first I wanted to explain the program to you. I'd like to direct you to the picture, though, on the screen, and that is Battalion Chief Jim Walter with our mayor, Tara Walter, and then we have the United States Fire Administrator, Tanya Hoover, and then the, I'm sorry, the, the United States Fire Administrator is G. Keith Bryant. Superintendent of the National Fire Academy is Tanya Hoover, and that's them at their graduation. But again, I want to explain the program and then ask Jim to, to speak to it before we recognize him. So the National Fire Academy's Manager Officer Program is a multi-year curriculum that introduces emergency, emerging emergency service leaders to personal and professional skills in change management, risk reduction, and adaptive leadership. Acceptance into the program is a first step in professional development as a fire emergency medical services manager, and includes all four elements of professional development: education, training, experience, and continuing education. Students build on foundational management and technical competencies, learning to address issues of interpersonal and cultural sensitivity, professional ethics, and outcome-based performance. On completion of the fire program, fire officers are better prepared to grow professionally, improve skills, and meet emergency and professional challenges, be able to embrace professional growth and development, enjoy a national perspective on professional development, understand and appreciate the importance of professional development, and have a network of fire service professionals who support career development. So with that, I'm going to ask Battalion Chief Walter to come up and share his experience.
Oh, thank you. You kind of touched on the, the high points of the, of the program. It was two years. For the fire service, it was a, it was a little bit strange, because we didn't do any, you know, hazardous, hazardous stuff. Didn't have to wear turnouts, there, there wasn't any fire, there wasn't any smoke. We got to learn about the more academic side of the fire service, and learn about things like community risk reduction, and data management, and, you know, some of these things that we're going to be able to bring back to the Town of Florence to help grow the fire department, but also to help grow the community along with us. And he kind of touched at the end, one of the most unique experiences here was attending with people from, all the way from New Hampshire, all the way up to the highest point of Washington, and somebody from Valdez, Alaska. So we got to experience with people from all across the country. We got to talk about the specifics of our fire departments, some of the things that they're doing in their communities, and just to see how we, how we stand on a, on a national scale. And also to be able to bring from that is lifelong contacts and, and friends throughout the fire service. And, you know, I'm looking forward in taking the next step, as we've talked about, the next step is the Executive Fire Officers Program. So I'm hoping with chief's support that we're going, that I'm going to be able to apply for that, hopefully get accepted, and continue down this, this road of education for the fire service. Thank you.
Any questions for Chief Walter?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Hughes?
I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And what was the one thing that you walked away with that you felt was the best part?
Well, it's, that's kind of a multi-part answer. So I'm not technically done yet. I still have a capstone project that I have to complete, and with chief's support. It's been ongoing for about two years. It's a pretty comprehensive program to increase, or to decrease cancer risk to our department, which includes regular turnout, are the, the turnouts that we wear, to be able to replace them at a certain time, also dealing with on-scene procedures, to be able to wash some of it off before we get into the truck, and procedures when we get back to the station. I know that doesn't sound, sound like a lot, or it seems very basic, but again, these are things that even on the, on the town level reduces our, our risk and our liability if we can, if we can prevent some of those things. So that's kind of what I took, that's what I still have to do, so I guess you could call that taking it away. But also, I, I would have to say, and I think chief would agree with me, because he's, he's been to the Fire Academy several times, it's in the, it's in the people that you meet, and the relationships that you create. Like I said, from coast to coast, you know, just, just guys that, or I shouldn't say they're not all guys, but people that we can just call, you know, and, and whether it be to say hi, or whether it be to ask for advice, or, you know, anything that they're doing, or something that we know they were doing, that we're trying to. So it's, it's a great network. I think that would be one of the main things.
Okay.
With that, please join me in congratulating Chief Walter.
Congratulations. Our next presentation this evening is for Special Recognition of Sergeant Phil Ricaminie for completing a ten-week course given through Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command, Mr. Daniel Hughes.
Thank you.
Police Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. First, I'd just like to say Florence is really lucky to have the caliber of people that we have. It's really nice to see people go into the Fire Academy and, and the opportunities to go to like Northwestern Staff and Command. Northwestern Staff and Command is one of two premier schools that police leaders really need to go to in order to lead a police department. Northwestern Staff and Command is ten weeks, it's college-level credits, it's a curriculum that is compressed into a short period of time, but if you were to take these classes one at a time, you, they would probably take you one, maybe one and a half years to get through. As I said, he's, he was graded probably three or four tests a week, and it covers the myriad of, of subjects as human resources, budgeting, leadership, staffing. It, it covers everything that you have to look at as a, as a police leader. And we were very fortunate, we now have, for Florence PD, we have three people, including myself, that have attended Northwestern Staff and Command. Sergeant Ricaminie attended here in, in Tempe. Northwestern brought in experts from all across the country, and touched on all of those things that I talked about earlier, and it talked about futuristic, where policing is going to go in the future. Phil's kind of shy, but I will let him say a little bit about it.
Well, thank you guys for the opportunity. I really appreciate the town, Chief Hughes, and Mr. Billingsley for, for taking a, a leap with me, I think, and investing in my future for the town and for the citizens. A lot of things, I took a lot of things away from my experience, mostly the networking. I didn't have the luxury of having people from all across the country, but all, there was only one federal agency, but every other agency was local to the Valley and Globe, I think was the furthest east that they went. What I took away most was a lot of, I'm trying to think of the word, succession planning is, is, is a huge part that I feel that we do well here in the department, and that Chief Hughes is, is focused on a lot, and it really instilled, or brought light to a lot of the things that he's instilled in us, and, and mirrors for us to, to succeed. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that made that an opportunity for me.
We also have his, we also have his, his wife here tonight, and she put up with Phil being gone for ten weeks. And as you can see from the picture, Mr. Billingsley came and, and was there on, during graduation. So I'm really glad, again, to say that for law enforcement, for public safety, it's really good to have people attend these types of schools, because what you're looking at is your future leadership for the Town of Florence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, do you want to meet me at the podium? All right. This evening, we have a proclamation regarding the Fourth, not the Fourth of July, good Lord, July as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence. You want to take turns with me, every other? Excellent. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Florence, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and...
Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and the Town of Florence recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, and...
Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and...
Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Tara Walter that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence. Will you tell us what's going on in July for Parks and Recreation Month?
I will. I'm, I'm going to go with the biggest one. Obviously, the fabulous, or the Fourth of July Freedom Fest is this Thursday, and we are starting off with Free Swim Day at the Aquatic Center, and we are asking anybody who comes to just, don't bring a school supply that they can donate for our back-to-school drive. And then we'll be having all kinds of contests at the Aquatic Center. The, the most, the biggest one is the Cannonball Contest, and that always gets a pretty big turnout, and everybody has a lot of fun with that. And then also SRP, who is, who gave us a five thousand dollar community grant for our Fourth of July event, will be at the Aquatic Center all day on July 4th, and they'll be talking about their water safety program, so that's pretty exciting for us. And then at five o'clock, the, the action kind of shifts over to Heritage Park, and there's got a lot of games and activities going on, bingo, cornhole, live entertainment, and then at eight-thirty, it kind of wraps up with our, our big fireworks display. So we're very excited about that. But then throughout the rest of the month, there's swim lessons, there's kids' summer camp over at the Library and Community Center, there's teen night at the Aquatic Center, and there's family nights at the Aquatic Center. So there's quite a bit of activity going on, even though school will be going back soon, some of that stuff will still continue. So lots of activity. We're very excited that Parks and Recreation Month is here. I always joke that I think somebody in another part of the country declared this as the kind of Get Outdoors Month, because for us, it's crazy hot here, but everywhere else in the country is pretty nice. But we're, we're happy that we get a whole month, and we hope people get outside and take advantage of our parks, programs, and facilities. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing all that.
Maybe you could, in that backpack, include some peanut butter and jelly.
I, I think that might be an idea for next year. Thank you.
Item number eleven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is adoption of the Active Transportation Plan. B, approval of an extension of agreement for temporary housing at Florence Fire Station 542 by American Medical Response for an additional twelve months. C, approval of an extension agreement with Air Methods Corporation for the utilization of the helipad at Fire Station 541 for an additional twelve months. D, approval of an inmate work contract with the Arizona Department of Corrections for a period of five years, with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Item E, approval of the Inter-Agency Service Agreement, known as ISA, between Arizona State Parks and the Town of Florence to manage McFarland State Historic Park through June 30th, 2020. Item F is approval of entering into a revocable license slash lease and professional services agreement with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for McFarland State Historic Park through June 30th, 2020. Item G, approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending May 30th, 31st, 2019, in the amount of two million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or council that would like an item removed at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to have item E removed.
Item E is the approval of the Inter-Agency Service Agreement. Is there anybody else that would like anything else removed at this time?
I agree with the item.
Okay. At this time, I need a recommendation approving the consent agenda with the removal of item E at this time.
Phil move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay. Councilmember Wall, item E?
I just have a question for clarification purposes. The last paragraph on the first page of the description indicates that the intergovernmental agreement is no different than it has been in the past, with the exception that we're required to electronically transfer all revenue generated at the park to Arizona State Parks once a month, and then Arizona State Parks will reimburse the town the funds within five days, which to me sounds like a ludicrous circle of, of payments. So what I was wondering is, I know that we receive funding or funds from the gift shop through the chamber. The chamber then reports that amount to the town, and the town then will submit that amount to the state? Is that the way it's going to work? I'm confused. I mean, it just sounds like another state-imposed crazy way of doing business.
Madam Mayor, council member. That is, that is certainly, this is going to be a new process that has not been done before, to my knowledge. There are five partner parks in the system, and it seems to be that we, McFarland State Park, will be the first that will have this type of an agreement. This was driven by their procurement people at State Parks. They're all new to the agency, and they recited state statute as the reason why they wanted to make these changes to the agreement. We don't necessarily think that they're necessary, but we're willing to give it a try, I think. The funds that are raised at McFarland State Park through the gift shop and through donations have never come to the town before. They've always stayed with the chamber, and prior to the chamber managing the park with the, the Main Street program. So that's always been kind of their incentive to, to operate the gift shop, and it helps with... expenses there with supplies and that sort of thing. So this is something new that we're trying, and I think this will be part of that discussion as we talk about our long-term priorities with this park and our relationship with State Parks over the next year. This agreement is for a one-year period, and during that time, we intend to have discussions with State Park staff on where we go from there and the real purpose of having this new process that doesn't seem to make sense to a lot of us.
So the funds that are submitted to the state will come back to the town, and then the town will give them back to the chamber. Is that the way?
That is the theory. And I'd like to be able to coordinate this in such a way that maybe the chamber is somehow able to make that deposit directly, to eliminate at least one...
One middleman.
...step in that whole process. Because, and we made this clear to State Park staff, this impacts our staff. It adds that layer of bureaucracy that we don't quite understand the purpose of. And I don't want to be too negative. We really value our partnership with State Parks and value what McFarland State Park brings to our community. But we want to do this as efficiently as possible and certainly keep it in the best interest of not only the chamber, who, you know, is willing to manage the park, but also the town of Florence.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion.
Wait, wait. Councilmember Anderson also pulled up.
Yes, I have a question about the responsibility for the maintenance of the building. We've seen the rope up around the front of the building, and I understand there's supposed to be some kind of railing put up. Now, who's responsible for that? Is that the town's responsibility? Is that the state? Who's going to pay for that, and what's the schedule on it?
To my knowledge, there are no set plans in place and certainly no schedule, and there is, has been discussion on who exactly is responsible for that type of improvement. So I don't know that we actually have a good answer to give you, sir.
Do you have any answer on that, Town Manager?
No, sir. We had had really good luck the last two years when Ms. Black was heading the department in terms of when there were needs for maintenance. We merely needed to request that and then wait some time, and they got mitigated. Very, very good successes that have occurred, the new signage, the new roof, the repairs to the porch, most recently, the wireless fire alarm in the facility, all paid for by State Parks. Clearly, it's their property, it's their responsibility to do those ADA improvements. They came and removed all the steps, et cetera, but my understanding is that the current staff does not have a budget for that project, or a budget has not been identified to... I think the most recent iteration we got from them is they were going to order railings from ACI and install railings, and then install compliant ADA ramps to the building. But I don't believe there's any budget for that.
It's sort of an eyesore right now for the town. You know, we have a state park that we're very proud of, and yet they got a yellow rope around the front of it. So what can we do?
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to add that it says here under five, if I'm understanding it, it says building maintenance, the town is responsible for maintaining and making those construction improvements. B?
Yep.
Safety, national, directing either the interior shell.
Yeah. A is basic maintenance, but B, it reads...
But that's a natural emergency.
Well, safety would be considered...
Emergency? Is that what you're considering it?
I think safety would fall under B. We're looking at...
I've read it. I know what A says, I know what B says. The answer to the question, under A, that's routine maintenance, just like any lease agreement would be. B, that would comply if there wasn't ADA access to the building. There is ADA access to the building, it's just on one side where the gift shop is, not in the front where the chamber is. So as it stands now, there isn't a human health risk, that's what the rope's up for, and there is ADA access to the parking lot, to the gift shop, and to the chamber, you just have to go around the porch. So not the town's responsibility to do those improvements, they'll be very expensive. If the council wanted to budget funds to do that in the next year, that's certainly within your purview, but we have not budgeted to do improvements to the State Park for their railing or adding additional ADA ramps.
Well, Section 3.3.3.3 says the town shall have the right to enter the license area at any time to make repairs or improvements.
Sure, that's not a requirement to the town to make improvements. That is the ability for the town to access their private property as part of the agreement if improvements needed to be made.
But what we can do is we can communicate with the State Parks and just see where they are at in regards to their budget, and see if we can bring an update back for council.
Sure, and Jen most certainly will do that, but once again, I'll reiterate, if council wants to spend town money to improve that state property, that's within your purview. There just isn't money in the budget to do that in the budget you just approved.
I just was under the impression that those ropes were up because that was considered a safety issue, that there was no railing.
True.
Prevent someone in a wheelchair from rolling off if, for some reason, they didn't have their brakes or whatever on. So that's why I was thinking it fell under B, because it's a safety issue for someone who is in a wheelchair or walking around the porch, there's no support system for them to hold on to.
Very true. The ropes are there because the state determined that there was a safety risk. It's their liability, they get sued if somebody... It wasn't for somebody rolling off the porch, however, it was for somebody stepping up onto the porch or stepping off the porch and breaking their ankle, twisting their knee, breaking a hip, et cetera. That's why they put the ropes up, was to protect the state's liability, because they would be sued if that occurred, it's their building.
And State Parks has always been a good partner to us.
They have. And they've put hundreds of thousands of dollars in the building in the last three years. The railing issue is just the most recent, and I'm sure that they'll get around to having some funding. It took us a year and a half to get the wireless fire alarm funded, so I have hope that we could do this. As I sit here, it occurs to me, I sent around an email this morning to council with regard to the facade program. State Parks is eligible to apply for the facade program too and get a grant for up to $5,000 to partner in that project.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we need a motion on item E.
I'll make a motion to approve item E from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, 12A, discussion, approval, disapproval to adopt Resolution Number 1707-19, adopting the Uniform Video Service License and application, and adopt Ordinance Number 6719, amending the town of Florence Code of Ordinances to comply with Arizona state law governing video service license agreements. Ms. Lisa Garcia?
Mayor and members of council, this is really a housekeeping item. This action is being brought to you because Senate Bill 1140 was passed in 2018. What that did was it required uniform video servicing provider license throughout the state of Arizona. So since that time, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns have been working with municipalities to ensure that all municipalities go in and adopt the same licensing agreement and have the same rules. You remember, we had probably the same conversation when we started talking about food trucks a couple of months ago. There was Senate bill passed, and all municipalities needed to have the same language, same ordinances. So the league went and worked with municipalities as well as attorneys to make sure that we all had the best language possible. That's what we have before you tonight. We have a resolution that is adopting the application as well as the policy. We also have an ordinance before you that is adopting language that needs to be tweaked within our code, based on the fact that you have pre-January 1, 2020, and post-January 21, 2020, applications. So that means that our current ordinance, some contracts such as Cox Communication, will be using that language until the time that they ask for a renewed license, and after January 1, 2020, the rest of them will be using the new language. In between that time, we will be coming back and we will be amending the ordinance once again and removing the language that is the prior year language. And as you can see from the request for council action, Cox Communication actually does expire on September 5, 2021. And so they do have the right to come in and ask for a new application license underneath the current loss, and they would have the right to move forward underneath the new license with the new licensing rules and agreement.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Lisa Garcia has given us an overview of both items 1 and 2, the resolutions 1707-19 and 679-19.
Because these are statutorily required, there is no requirement underneath the town code for first reading or second reading of the ordinance you adopted in one night, because it's a statutory requirement.
Councilmember Wall?
I assume that this was a cable-related thing. So you mentioned Cox Cable. Are there any other companies that would need to use this? Are we expecting cable companies?
We actually have more companies that do have licenses agreements with the town of Florence, they just don't have infrastructure in the ground.
Okay.
And so right now, the only cable company that is located within the city limits of Florence is Cox Communication.
Airbnb is not considered a license.
CenturyLink doesn't have anything in the ground?
Not ground. If you're talking about DirecTV or another type of cable, that it's a different, but no, we do not have a license with CenturyLink.
I thought they were cable.
Where did you think that Century, is there a community you think was serviced by CenturyLink?
I don't know, I just hear them advertised all the time, and I don't know if they were even in town, so it's...
There, when you go out beyond the town of Florence city limits into the Santan Valley, there's a number of service providers that are included in that area. Florence Gardens used to be serviced by Eagle West Communications, but since that time has gone defunct, and they're using more of an air provider that is like a wireless provider to be able to get a signal, to be able to use it. So it's more like a DirecTV dish component, and so we don't have that in the ground right now. Dish, DirecTV, other services are not covered underneath this bill.
Madam Mayor, this is just video, as I understand it, and CenturyLink is more of a communications company for internet service and telephone service rather than video.
When we were talking about providers, I was only discussing cable service providers, video cable service providers.
Thank you.
Not discussing cable as a type of conduit that's in the ground.
So DirecTV is not a video service?
DirecTV is not their, a satellite provider that is under different rules.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay. With that, I need a motion on item A, aye, first?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1707-19.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion on item A, two?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 679-19.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12B is Resolution Number 1705-19. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of application for fiscal year 2019, state community development block grant, known as CDBG funds, certifying that said applications meet the community's previously identified housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state CDBG program, and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete activities outlined in said application for infrastructure improvements. Ms. Jennifer Evans?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, just to reiterate what was discussed earlier, we are asking for approval of this resolution to apply for CDBG funding in the amount of $91,000 to complete a, what I would loosely call a sidewalk project, but really the project will be to replace non-ADA compliant ramps with ADA compliant ramps in 38 locations.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding that agenda item? Councilmember Hughes, you were first.
I, we had a lot of discussion about this, about this funding, and I still am not quite settled on it should just be for the sidewalks. I think that we do need to spend some of our funding with the individuals that came before council tonight.
Mayor, now, Mr. Billingsley. Can you explain to council, should that be decided upon, what A implications would be, B, how we would need to do that? Because again, I'm under the understanding, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me, that we don't have that housing component there?
I'm probably not the right one to answer the question. That's a Jennifer question.
I apologize for that, then.
That's all right. I don't know that we can guarantee funding to those particular individuals. We would have to open up a price, an opportunity for people to apply, and it would probably go, any funding that we have would go to the most needy, and that would be determined by, you know, certain criteria. So I don't know who that might be in our community, but I'm, you know, we just can't guarantee it to any particular people. So it's possible to do it, but again, I would caution, you know, we would definitely have to limit the program or limit the housing rehab per home and determine what the most important improvements would be for those individuals, whether it's a roof or plumbing work or that sort of thing. So that, and to split it with an infrastructure project, I don't think that would go very far at all, but I'm probably not the best person to answer that question. That would be Mr. Solis with Public Works. He can better tell you how much money it will take for those ramp improvements.
Talk to me about timelines when this grant is actually due, because I know...
That's a very good point. The grant application is due August 1st to CAG, and so we have a one-month period, a very limited amount of time, to develop a new scope and bring that back to the council. We'd have one more meeting to bring that back. So, and also, we would have, we're going to have 12 months maximum to implement the project once the grant is awarded, so it's best to have a project lined up, and it could take a month or two to qualify residents for funding. That's just a consideration. I think that, you know, housing rehab is, we can do it, but it will, it might be challenging with the timeline, limits that are there with the grant in one year. Two would be better.
Okay. Any other council members have anything to say? Councilmember Cordas?
So we just had this earlier, which was open to the public to discuss and bring forth their recommendations. So let's say they recommended something other than a house. Say they recommended streetlights, or a crosswalk, or, as Councilmember Anderson is wanting some blinking lights at the schools, the, yeah. So let's say they proposed one of those ideas. On the same agenda, we're now voting to go ahead and move forward with what the town staff would like us to do. So I'm looking at it, and I'm going, on one second, we're saying, hey, give us your ideas, but oh yeah, by the way, we're going to make our decision tonight, and we don't have time to look at your ideas, maybe next year, maybe in two years. So I don't mean to sound condescending, or like I don't appreciate your time, because I do, and I think the crosswalk... I do, and I think the crosswalks are definitely an important thing and something that we need to address. I think we need to address them throughout the town. There's not one that's more important than the other because our citizens use all of them. So I, I'm not trying to say that. What I'm saying is that we're kind of like looking silly, for lack of a better description, at this moment. We're asking for public input on a project, but oh, by the way, it really doesn't matter what you propose to us tonight because we've already decided what we want to do or the staff has already found a project they would like for us to approve. So it's hard for me, although I agree that they need to be done and they're important, it's hard for me to sit here and say, yeah, I can move forward with this project and I'm just going to not hear what the public said to me, regardless if it's their personal home or another place in town that needs some help. I'm just like, to have the two on the same agenda, I feel like we should have had this discussion maybe the last meeting so that we had a week to say, I would really like to look at this project. I really think that, you know, the crosswalk by the post office to me is, is an important project. I, I just felt like we maybe needed to have it come to us a little sooner, get that public input. I realize you said this was the second time that the public has had the opportunity to speak. I just feel like the two on the same agenda, to have a public input and then, oh, we're going to make the decision are kind of like weighted unfairly.
Let me do my best to try and help. It's, it's really a two-phase answer to the question. Number one, we usually have a two-year process every other year. So we develop projects and, and determine what those projects are the previous year. This year's an aberration. This is not what normally occurs. We literally had to make a choice a month ago. Just had the meeting at CAG a month ago where we made this discussion and had to make a decision very quickly in terms of, of where we could spend the funds and what that project would be. As, as you said, we had outreach previously and would consider that outreach. The other answer to your question, or the other question that you asked was, what about if folks brought up another project? We wouldn't be able to do the project because of the low to mod income survey. If somebody had a, the flashing lights wouldn't qualify, a traffic signal wouldn't qualify, but if somebody brought up a public works project that was a qualifying project. Well, a perfect example is, the first thing that we looked at is, could we do, put additional money towards the 12-inch water line, which we funded two grants in a row? The answer was no, because we don't have enough time to do a special income survey. So we're limited by the same time constraint that, that the, the public is limited in terms of what they can provide tonight, just because this is not our normal process and, and there's, there's not a lot of time left. I agree with, with what you're saying in terms of how it looks, but that is, it's not necessarily staff's fault because this isn't the way that our process usually works and we're sort of in a hurry to get to the finish line if we want to apply for the funds. The, the other challenging thing as part of this is the administrative, the process itself. The town used to have a housing rehab program and decided to get rid of the housing rehab program for a number of, of reasons. The costs, the staffing, the changes in, in what we had occurred. So we have not had a housing program since I've been here. As, as the lady in the audience said earlier, we did have a key ceremony on a project when I first got here, but we haven't had a housing program for years. So the idea of starting a housing program in the next two weeks and preparing an application for this year, if we hope to receive the funding, is, is not real feasible. It's just kind of the way that it occurred this year, if that makes sense.
And that's not what I, that's not what I'm recommending. I, I totally got that that's not something we have, so there was no way we could move forward. My frustration was that we had people that thought that's what they were able to apply for that grant for. And Jennifer's done her best to let people know that it's not available for that at this time. I just don't like to waste people's time, but my, my thought process is, can we do a better job at explaining things, you know? Here we are sitting here tonight and I'm asking these questions because I didn't realize we only had a month to figure this out and that this is the only project that we've actually done this background work on because it was something that we were already working on. So we had that privilege of having that information. And it wasn't that this is the project staff wants. It's just this one is the one that falls into place because it has everything that we already needed and we don't have to expend more resources to try to meet this, this tight deadline. I think this whole comment for me is more just informational for myself and for the public to understand why we're going to pick this project, maybe, maybe not, over something else because the time restraint is so tight on us at this moment because we weren't expecting the money. Winkelman, or I think that's the name you said, is out this money that they were probably expecting. So they're probably having a whole different conversation right now than what we are because now they're short $91,000. So I just, it's informational and I feel like it's good that everybody get to hear these kind of explanations instead of us just going through with a vote and nobody really understanding why we got to where we got. So nothing saying that anybody didn't do their job or that you guys aren't doing an excellent job because we know that that, we wouldn't be here if you weren't doing an excellent job. It was just for clarification for myself and for the audience members who came asking for money to help them, thinking that this program would qualify. Now they, now we all understand the timeline's too short. We're not going to be able to, to grant residential rehab or anything like that in this timeframe. Look at it for two years. So that way we can get the whole process put together, the whole system and everything like that. So just informational more than anything.
Vice Mayor?
I would like to clarify the Winkelman thing. If I understood the, the process right, was that we were sharing with Winkelman every other year, we would get money. So it's not like we both got money every year. This, okay, all right.
Oh yeah, no, I knew that. That's what I was saying. That's why I said this would have been their year, correct? So the, our night, our money that we're getting, they would have gotten in addition. So it's kind of like, oh.
Okay.
But at the CAG meeting, it was very well communicated when Penal County came forward. You know, this is what we're looking at. This is the direction we're moving in. There was no voiced opposition. There was no conversation with staff afterwards, as well as Penal County presented at both arenas. And I, go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, I just want to make one point clear because as part of the CDBG process, there's a couple of things that each city has to make sure that they do. And one of those things is to hold two public hearings, where we receive input from the citizens, after which time the mayor and council makes a decision on which projects that they feel the city wants to move forward with. So I just wanted to say, we, there was no decision made prior to the meeting tonight that the public hearings are very important to receive our citizens' input. And as you know, at any time you feel like you need more time to make a question, you do have the ability to table an item. But this particular time, we just need to say that council is hearing from their citizens and you're hearing from staff. Staff's making a recommendation on what, that you, they feel that you should utilize the funding for, but council still has an independent choice as what they want to do with the project. Once council lets us know, then we proceed with the timeline. So I just make, want to make that very clear, that no decision has happened before tonight.
Absolutely. And I'm glad that you made that clear. And I also want to add that staff has communicated this very well. And I understand even from the residents that came forward this evening, you did communicate, you know, we don't have the housing in play, but we still heard, you know, their desires. And it gives us something to look at and potentially work for in the future. That's correct.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Larson.
So I appreciate you pointing out the fact that no decision was made because when, I know I obviously wanted to hear what the citizens had to say tonight and I really value the public's opinion. So I just wanted to make that clear that I hadn't made any predetermined decision, obviously, before tonight. But then also, I wanted to ask some more questions about this one-month deadline. Now you said that that's when the application is due? So when that, when you apply, what details do you need to include in that? So if we did a housing program, say in the future, or maybe this one, what would, what level of detail would you need? Do you need everything down to architectural drawings of what you're going to be doing in the houses? Or is it simply, this is, we're going to do some type of housing program and it can be very vague and you can specify those things later within those 12 months? I guess what level of detail does that go into?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, we do not have to go into that level of detail with the application. It's fairly high level, but I think what's important to note here is, we need to understand the priority of the town council and receive that direction from the town council of how we're going to approach a rehabilitation program, whether we intend to do complete rehab projects on a home, which like I mentioned earlier, can run up to 80, $90,000, or do we want to have a more limited type program? So those are the main details that need to be worked out. And of course, we would want as much time as possible to maybe start opening up the application process and going through the tasks that need to be done to qualify people because that does take time.
Now, I know you said also that staff would be responsible for everything, including the contract work, et cetera, and coordinating all of that. So is there an ability there to limit the dollar amount, so say you could say five or $10,000 per home? And so say they have plumbing work that needs to be done or something like that, where they could apply that amount towards the total project or pick projects that only qualify under that amount? Or we can set stipulations? Is that an option? Or is it because, is it because we are the, essentially a project manager for these different projects or we consult out for those, where they wouldn't be able to do that? It would have to be, we will do all plumbing work, period, and that's just, it's just done? I guess, what's the stipulations with that?
We have complete, we have flexibility on that. So it's just whatever the town determines is the best fit for us at that time.
Okay. So we could set dollar amount limits per house?
You could. I recommend more than $5,000.
I was just throwing a dollar amount home.
Twenty might be a good, good amount in the future, $20,000. I've seen that in other communities to do limited work.
Up to that amount? And would we still do project management there where we would like find the plumber or the, whatever it is and actually make sure that work is completed? Or would it be that they do all of that type of work and then we would sort of, almost like a reimbursement?
The resident would not. So it would either be town staff or a consultant that we hire. And one other detail I'd like to bring up that we've done in the past with complete rehabilitations, we had to move families out of their homes for four months, up to four months.
Do we pay for that as well?
We did, through the grant.
Okay.
So there's a lot of variables with the housing program.
How much staff time in the past did that consume?
I'm probably the worst person to ask that because I was, I took over the position during construction, so it consumed all of my time. But it would consume a majority of, of the time just with project management, in addition to the administrative work that's required with the grant itself.
You keep talking about, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. You keep talking about complete rehabilitation, which obviously for me wouldn't be my intent. It would be to make sure that we're diversifying the funds as much as possible to affect as many families positively as possible. So for me, I wouldn't like a complete rehab where you would be moving somebody out of the house. And you would be, I mean, so we do have flexibility is what you're saying.
We do.
So you could set a dollar amount or you could set a project limit on those?
Yes.
All at our discretion. So when we go out to the public and we ask them and they say, I want my house done, there is that opportunity with this grant, up to our discretion, what we're deciding now, if that's the direction we'd want to go. In one month, all we have to do is turn in the paper that says this is the direction we want to go, if I'm understanding correctly. We don't have to get down into the nitty-gritty of what we've selected.
No, but a month goes by very quickly because there are a lot of details associated with that grant application and then it's, it's over, well, it's over 30 pages now and it's been condensed.
Okay. I guess that's what I was asking, is how, what's, what's all involved in that? Are we, I don't want to oversimplify it, I don't want to also overcomplicate it.
Most of it's the background information that goes along with it. They, like I said, they have streamlined the, the actual application itself and it, we have to deal with a lot of demographic data. If we have to do an, well, not with housing, you wouldn't have to do an income survey because it's for low to mod income residents, that satisfies the requirement to, to have that low-income data. But there's a lot, without going into a lot of detail here on the floor, because it's an administrative function, you'd have, definitely have a good scope of work and, you know, and the demograph, demographics in general and that sort of thing. So it's difficult to describe.
Let me, let me do my best to assist. And I don't want to sound like Debbie Downer and I don't want to sound like I'm against housing rehab, but I used to administer the, the region, regional CDBG programs for all the cities. Housing rehab is very involved. It is federal funds. It's not local funds. So all the requirements of federal funds have to be met, including Davis Bacon, the federal bidding requirements, the federal scoping requirements, as well as all the federal paperwork. So the more projects that you do, the, there's no economies of scale. It is that amount of staff time and/or consultant time multiplied by every project. So there's going to be an application that needs to be completed. There's detail to the application. It's not generalized. There's analysis that has to be done and completed. And after the application, then it's the analysis of the actual dwelling unit that, that has to be assessed. The feds are not going to let you to go in and say, we're spending $5,000 per house and you go into a house and it's got a bunch of electrical problems, a bunch of plumbing problems and health and safety problems. They're going to expect you as part of the project to, to provide a project that's safe. Not, well, we fixed one-third of the safety problems in the house, but we're cool with the other two-thirds of the safety problems. The, the best example that I can provide is the last project that Florence did. Florence went and went to a project intending, intending to repair an old adobe. They got in, they assessed the project, they actually started on the project design. And it was determined that with the money that was available, that house couldn't be made livable. So essentially, they took all the money for a two-year period and put it into essentially building a new dwelling unit on the side of, of the adobe house. There's no way to halfway that. You couldn't go into that and say, well, sorry, you can apply for this, but you can only spend $5,000 on this adobe. If it's not going to bring the house up to livable conditions, that's not an applicable project.
Right.
And then the management of the project itself, the bidding requirements, it's very involved. The selection of the contractors and the management of the contractors, as well as the, all the paperwork involved. A housing prog, a housing program is very different than what we do now. It's a whole lot more involved. One of the things that I recall from the past project was, we actually spent a lot of money towards hiring a consultant to do the management, the bidding, et cetera, that took away from the cost or what could have gone into the project. I don't remember exactly what it was. I asked Jen before the meeting, but it's, it was one of the things that council wasn't happy with at that time, is there was X amount of money and a third of that money went to pay somebody to manage the project. So it's, like I said, I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but there is a reality that exists to having a housing program and managing a housing program. Casa Grande used to have a staff that did their housing program, including a director and, and other staff that, that oversaw that effort, but they did it in-house, whereas towns like Florence have utilized consultants in the past. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
That clarification definitely helps. And also, part of, you know, this grant, I do have a question because we haven't done the housing program in so many years. What happens if somebody does say have an insurance claim, receives money from their insurance company, fails to make the repairs, but then applies for this grant?
I don't know if there's necessarily any correlation between a previous insurance claim and the grant funds necessarily. I mean, the work still needs to be done. So we would have to go in and evaluate the home and, and go from there.
But that's just something, you know, that I would say to think about, especially as somebody who experienced upwards to, gosh, I think my insurance company has already paid out close to $30,000 in repairs and we still haven't, you know, fixed everything. So it's just something to, you know, be aware of if, you know, if somebody's receiving money here, if the-
There are many intricacies with this type of program.
I just want everybody to be, you know, aware and cognizant.
Madam Mayor, you pay me to make recommendations, so I'm going to make a recommendation to you now. So for what it's worth. Time is short. This process, we didn't intend, we didn't know we were going to receive this money. We didn't know we were going to have a month and a half to go through this process. We are appreciative. I don't want to make it sound like we're not appreciative to the federal government for the ability to get the CDBG funds. But from where I sit, our best opportunity to get the funds and be successful in implementation would be the barrier removal project. If town wants to move to a housing rehab program, I would recommend that next year during the budget process, we actually go through, plan for and budget for a housing rehab program if, if that's what the town wants to employ with our future CDBG funds so that we get a chance- so that we get a chance to, to get out ahead of it, as Ms. Cordas said, and make sure that, that we're prepared, ready, have an application put together, and a process in place to implement.
So, and I was going to say, so when we're talking about, and it's exactly what I believe all of us have kind of already emulated regarding, you know, housing and setting a certain portion aside, however, I want to make sure the process is very much streamlined of, these are the requirements, this is when it's posted to communicate, you know, your desires, here's what is needed from you to move forward, as well as, you know, if you are selected, there you go. I can remember watching from the audience years ago, when the process was, you know, taking place prior to being on council, there was a question asked regarding CDBG, about is there a waiting list? And, you know, so there's always going to be all of those questions, but, you know, if it's in writing and it's communicated, that's great. The other side, because I'm also devil's advocate, I believe in being able to do the greater good for the entire community, and when we're looking at this project that's going to impact, you know, a lot of our residents, I feel that that's important. I also appreciate Ms. Adams' perspective, and agree, you know, reducing blight in the community. That's where also, earlier, I said, you know, we have some amazing members in our audience, and we do, and there's, there was too many to name at that time, but even extending beyond our audience, one of the needs that was communicated was a pool fence barrier. I know that there's pool fence companies that, you know, you can apply and say, hey, I have a need, and they will go ahead, and they will gift X amounts based on the gifts that they receive. I don't want to name any names, but, you know, I'll reach out to that person and let them know some of the resources that are available.
That would be great. And I just wanted to add real quickly, speaking about our commitment of leveraging funds, we have funds available in the general fund for ADA ramp improvements. We don't have anything this year set aside for housing rehabilitation, so I just wanted to point that out real quick.
Okay. Councilmember Wall?
I, I just want to say, this discussion has been very eye-opening, and I did, I totally agree with the comments that each of my fellow council members have made, and I sympathize with those individuals who have needs for home improvements. But I, I feel that we have to consider fairness when we're looking at a home improvement program, because I would venture to guess that there are many homes and possible recipients within the town of Florence that could benefit from such a program. And how do we, as a council, determine who is best qualified to receive those funds? It becomes a very personal issue, I think, for each of us, and I'm just not ready to make that decision on, on that type of a program at this point. And I agree that we really, as a council, should consider those projects that are for the benefit of the greater good, and recognizing that we can accomplish some of those, those larger projects with a single grant, as opposed to individuals who, who we may wind up leaving out with the type of program that, that we're talking about for home improvement. So that's kind of where I am on this particular project at this point.
If I might add to that, I would like to see the staff put together a plan for us. Let's don't wait until the budget time, but tell us, you know, what's necessary, what we would have to do, what the pros and cons of this would be, because, as you say, it's, it's going to be a costly project, and I'd like to see something in writing as to what the advantages and disadvantages of such a program would be.
Done, we'll, we'll handle that.
Yeah, I see value in that.
Yeah, we'll do it.
All right. There's no further discussion or questions with that? I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution seventeen oh five dash one nine.
A second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Resolution number seventeen oh eight dash one nine. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, ordering the abandonment of a portion of a right-of-way within Florence, Arizona, generally described as situated in the southwest corner of Section thirty-six, Township Four South, range nine east of the Gila River Meridian, Florence Street, between East Butte Avenue and Eleventh Street.
And we skipped C. Sorry to interrupt your reading.
All right, I'm going to take it out of order, because I already read it.
Which one, which one did you read?
D.
I was on C, too.
Sorry, I crossed off C. All right, Mr. Salas, I apologize for going out of order.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a very simple item tonight. The town wishes to abandon a right-of-way, we've been working with Penile County for some months. The benefit to their project essentially is, while abandoning this right-of-way, we can kind of remove some of the hindrances of the setback. So allows them to have much more design flexibility. This is something that, again, Town Manager Brent Billingsley worked with, Penile County's project manager and the county manager on this. Brent, would you like to add anything to that?
I just, I, I'm kind of giggling, because I had a conversation right before the meeting with Councilmember Hughes, and we were talking about walkable communities. So I forgot that this is, this is on tonight, but this is a walkable communities project, where we're essentially abandoning a street and making it a pedestrian corridor for those folks that are customers of the county to be able to walk the complex.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Did we talk to the county about trading, doing, doing a land swap? You know, they have some property we'd like to have, right?
Well, yes and no. So it is in the works for what you say is a land swap, although not a land swap. Essentially, what I've talked about with the county is, if we abandon this street, it gives them some flexibility in terms of setbacks, because they're going to build their very large, I think it's twenty-four thousand square foot development services building, adjacent to where you see the red line. My request to them was, if we can make Park Street more of a boulevard concept, so it's more of an entry to that community instead of as it exists now. So that's the plan in terms of the land swap perspective, is giving up some right-of-way to have more of a, an entry point into the, into the community adjacent to the complex.
Oh, I was talking about getting the vacant lot that they have.
No, sir, that was not complic, it was not, we didn't have that conversation, sorry.
All right, with that, we need a motion.
A motion that we approve Resolution number one seven oh eight dash nineteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Back to you, Ms. Evans, thank you, Mr. Salas. Resolution number one seven oh six dash one nine, which is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, committing local funds as leverage for our fiscal year two thousand nineteen community development block grant application. And I crossed it off and moved on, because I just saw CDGB and said, did it? So I apologize.
No problem. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is our matching fund for the CDBG application, and the overall project is estimated to be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And so the town would have to commit approximately forty-eight thousand dollars to complete this project with the CDBG funding. So we are asking for approval of this resolution.
Okay. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution number seventeen oh six dash one nine.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Item E is discussion approval disapproval to award and a contract to Ellison Mills Contracting LLC to install valves, fire hydrants, tapping sleeves, and concrete-encased sewer, replace curb, sidewalk, and asphalt as necessary, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. The bid was four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, thirty-nine cents, plus a fifteen percent town contingency of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and four dollars and forty-six cents for CIPWU eighty-three, Phase Three B Downtown Twelve-Inch Loop, Mr. Christopher Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'd like to start off by sitting there saying, thank you for everybody who has participated in this, from this current council to past councils. When I, when I first arrived here approximately three years ago, we noticed some deficiencies in our infrastructure. And luckily, with the support of the council, we've had constant approvals on now the final phase of this project. This is the final phase of our twelve-inch loop, and it'll complete this project. Staff's been very excited to complete this project, I know the fire department's very excited about the completion of this project. Each part has improved our, again, fire flows, so this is absolutely, like I said, for me, a very proud moment to finally finish this project. This project, again, links the last part of where we finished off by the K eight, which would have been called Three A, to the portion that was called Two B, which is Butte Avenue. This will, again, include upsized lines, new fire hydrants, a little bit more coverage. We have partnered with John Kemp of the Fire Department to include additional hydrants along the way, to kind of bridge where we might have some shortage, or again, just where he feels there are operational concerns or operational needs. With that, I believe I have nothing to add.
All right, well, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? No, Councilmember Cordas, you are first.
I just want to know the timeframe, estimated timeframe for the project.
We, I believe our grant is due in November the fifteenth, and I believe we actually have it for November the first, completion. It may be December the fifteenth and then December first, so it's somewhere maybe just before Thanksgiving, or after Thanksgiving.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I was just going to say, reading the contract times, it says that they have a hundred and twenty days, and if they don't do it, it's a five hundred dollars a day penalty?
That is correct, that's established in the MAC.
That's good. I'll go ahead and see that, I wish we had that on some other contracts.
We have it on all contracts, sir.
What about the First Street out here?
We had it on First Street.
How much money are we getting back?
We have not. We've negotiated with the contractor to complete some work, to get it completed on time. So we have not, we have decided purposely not to assess liquidated damages on that project.
All right. If there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, with that, we need a motion.
I guess I make a motion then to approve, to award a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC to install the valves, fire hydrants, tapping sleeves, and concrete-encased sewer, replace the curb, sidewalks, and asphalt as necessary, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty, eighty-five cents. Of course, with the fifteen percent contingency plan for CIPWU eighty-three, Phase Three B, for the downtown twelve-inch loop.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I only have two items that I wanted to, to call out tonight. The first one kind of feeds off of what Chris just presented in terms of our twelve-inch water main loop, that's of tremendous benefit of the town, not only for life, safety, and quality of water, but also for future economic development and redevelopment in the town of Florence. But I wanted to call out the partnerships and relationships portions of my manager's report, because it gives me great pride to be in front of you tonight, to say that council asked three years ago for town to put a priority on developing partnerships and relationships. One of those partnerships is with the Florence Unified School District, and anybody who's been around Florence for a long time knows that that hasn't always been a, a very positive partnership. We, meaning the town of Florence, and the, the school district entered, entered into a memorandum of understanding a little over a year ago to work towards a STEM school. And although that STEM school has not gone forward, we, we both made commitments to each other in terms of expenditures that we would make, and improvements that would be completed to benefit the other. From the town's perspective, we agreed to do the twelve-inch water loop and to increase fire flows to the Florence K eight school, which had some real challenges from the, from the fire flow perspective, and to facilitate the ability for the school to do future projects, and know that they had the fire flows necessary to meet the intent of the code, which is in case the twenty-twelve codes that were just adopted by council about a month and a half ago. From the town's perspective, they agreed to rehabilitate a number of old buildings that had various issues, from lead-based paint to asbestos, that had fallen into disrepair. And it gives me great pride to say that the school district, as well as the town, have met those commitments, and that the town of Florence is, is better for it, and it's an example of, of an excellent partnership. The next thing I wanted to do, I intended to do at the last meeting, and we ran out of time, so we've had the opportunity, meaning the, the town of Florence, to be specifically represented on, on TV three different times now. One for the bullying video on News Channel Three, which is what I'm about to show, secondarily for the active shooter exercise on News Fifteen, and very soon to be broadcast, we are on Fox Ten Sports Night with, with the teens, again, for the bullying video with Kevin McCabe, and that was just taped last Saturday. I don't know when it airs, but we'll make sure we get it out to council, but with no further ado, here's the Channel Three story.
You know, when you think about bullying, you probably think of kids being cruel to one another at school, but bullying, not just limited to the classroom.
Not at all. From social media to even the workplace, children, teenagers, adults, all of us have experienced bullying one way or another, and that's the reasoning behind one artist's new video that's spreading the message that bullying has got to stop. Here's Gibby with that story.
Yeah, first of all, let me start with this, you know, this man that I've known for a very long time, and has been part of many communities, helping kids out, probably ever since I've known him, for the first time, Coco, you're always helping out this part, you're now helping out the town of Florence, and you have the Florence Teen Council here. You had something you've been sitting on for a while, and you said, you know what, the message has got to go out there with social media, with the, with the climate that we have today. This was an important message.
It, it really was, you know? Unfortunately, there's millions of people of all ages in the United States getting bullied, and they need to know that they have support, and the video helps to support that, and support them.
You had, you had mentioned there was a rapper that, that you've been close with a long time, you, you decided, hey, we're going to put this video together, you got these kids together, and I mean, when you watch this video, it's really touching, because it really pulls at the strings. This is what's happening on a daily basis.
No question, and you're right. Oko, he made this song about five years ago, and the song was so strong and so powerful, just like you said, that I'm like, you know, this has to be seen on social media, and so I shopped it around, nobody bit, and so, I'm like, you know, the best way to get something done is to do it yourself, and so I got with Florence Teen Council, the town of Florence, Parks and Rec, they said, let's do it, and that's the finished product.
You know, these are some of the teens you may recognize from the campaign, as we are showing you the video. What's the biggest message here? Because here's the thing, as adults, or maybe as others, they probably don't recognize it, but with social media now, it's got to be so much harder for teens these days.
Yes, definitely with social media, it gets more out there, and the word gets spread faster and quicker, and more people hear about it, and then you have more bullies, and it just gets really out of control, and it's just really terrible.
You know, one of the things I love about this video, though, it just doesn't stick to the school, right? This goes out in the community as well. It's one of those things where whoever you work with lets you know that you can act one way if you're going to act at home, but you got to carry that along with you and treat everybody right, not just people at school.
Yeah, it really is touching, because not just kids go through it, adults go through it as well, and it's just, it's a very, very big problem in the world.
As we tell people to go to YouTube, or the social media, the sites, to catch the video, what are, what's the main thing you want people to get out of this?
What I want people to get out of this is that bullying is a huge problem in the society today, within children.
Do you think this can help? Do you think a video like this can get out, if it gets out to enough people, that people are going to say, hey, you know what, we can make a difference?
Absolutely, because there could be some kids who just aren't comfortable with going to teachers about the issue, and when they see something like the video, they're like, oh, I know, I'm not the only one who has to deal with this, so I'm not alone in this fight of trying to stop bullying.
All right, so, Coco, if people want to get involved, if people want to see this, how can they spread this message then?
You know, this situation is very personal to me, so they can go to my personal Facebook page, KimKokoHunter, K-O-K-O-Hunter, on Facebook, and download it, spread it to their friends, and just help support those who feel helpless.
All right, I want to thank the kids, the town of Florence, and Coco, I, I got to tell you, like I said, we go way back, and he has always been helping kids, whether it was in Chandler, the East Valley, here on the south side... kids, whether it was in Chandler, the East Valley, here on the south side. Guys, I got to tell you that you got to watch this video, share it as many times. I know a lot of people are on summer break, but some are on year-round school, and even in your community. That person you may see right next to you is a person you may even need to help out. Maybe it's a smile, maybe it's probably water, especially when it's this hot.
So once again, Florence on Phoenix Media. So hope that you enjoyed it.
And they were also on the radio.
All right. I didn't know about the radio.
Yep, 97.3 this past weekend, they did an interview.
That's great. So our teen council is getting the word out.
They are. They're doing great.
I have a question. Do you know what the school is going to do with the rehabbed building that was going to be the STEM? What is it going to do now?
So they have multiple uses in those buildings. We went, we had the opportunity to go and tour that with Chris Knutson, the superintendent, last week, I think. I'm looking for Chris. We're talking public works, building safety, planning. We all went and toured it. So the first building that, that will, is the old Head Start Building, which is on the far north end of the campus, has been completely redone. And in January, the school district will be opening that as a daycare. So it has eight rooms in it. Two of those rooms are for infants, and then they're going to have rooms for, for all age groups up to junior high within that building. It's, it used to house like their IT and was storage and what have you. It's been all completely redone, brought up to code, et cetera. The other four buildings that are, that are just to the south and adjacent, new windows, new carpeting, new wall furnishings, ADA improvements, et cetera, they are going to be used for school programs, and they're going to be used for their new contract for before and after school. They have a new vendor. Town of Florence is no longer providing that before and after school program for them. Their new vendor will be utilizing those buildings as part of that program.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Our next item is our department reports. Is there any department head or member of council that has a question regarding any of their reports? This is our second call to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Kathy Adam.
Kathy Adam from 240 Struggles. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council. I want to thank you. I think that was a really productive and wonderful conversation about the CDBG grants and what they can be used for. And I heard the word eye-opener. I think it was just a very productive, good discussion for everybody to have. I would ask, though, I get asked a lot of times to fill out surveys for the town and various departments and to participate in these open meetings. I put a lot of thought into the CDBG meeting before I went. There were several other citizens and property owners that you heard today. We all went to that meeting thinking it was an open slate, and our opinions were being asked because there were possibilities. If the town clearly knew that we were limited in time and could only provide a certain type of service, I think it would have helped if we were told that at the meeting. I have heard that in the past, there was no citizen participation in these meetings that have to happen. To encourage participants to come forward, you need to respect our time and give us the parameters. We can understand that, and I will fight hard for the housing component, but I understand there's time limitations, and we don't want to lose that opportunity. But I would suggest you should help us help you and tell us that when we're having in the meeting, so we don't leave there thinking we've given this great input, having no idea that it was never possible. That would help. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other resident community, anybody? Close and call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I attended the CPR training that was put on by the fire department this last week. It was open to the town employees and to, I guess, the search team. It was a good program. I was surprised that there weren't more town employees. You know, there was Parks and Rec people that were there, but that's such a, a good program for everybody who needs to know how to do CPR, you know, parents, people living in the senior citizen community and so forth. So I'd like to encourage, next time we have, I think we have those programs quarterly, something like that, we have training. We need to advertise that more, get more people involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
First of all, just want to wish Kristen an early happy birthday for tomorrow. And then, just to summarize, it took me a while going through the agenda to put together a picture in my own mind of how these various tax rates we're going to shake out for those of us who live in various parts of the town. And so just, hopefully, this is correct information. I've always said math isn't my strong suit. But for the entire town, it appears as though the primary property tax will go down three cents, a little more than three cents. And for those who live in Anthem, depending on which part of Anthem someone may live in, the CFD rate for CFD number one will go down $2.56. For those who live in CFD number two, there'll be a slight increase in the CFD rate of 27 cents. For those who live in the SLID or Streetlight Improvement Districts 1 and 2, there will be no tax on their tax bill for this upcoming year. And for those who live in the SLID number three, there would be a 12 cents increase on their property tax rate. So hopefully, that's correct. It just helped me to visualize what any, or proposing to implement on the 15th. So that's all I have.
Good find on that 27 cents, Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say thanks, Karen, for the happy birthday. Remind me, I almost forgot sometimes. But no, I just wanted to say everyone has a happy Fourth of July, and everyone's safe. And thank you to our police officers for continuing to keep us safe, fire as well, especially during the Fourth of July. So thank you.
Councilmember Cordas?
I just want, I'm a little behind because I wasn't able to be here at our last town council meeting. I was out of town. But I attended the historical preservation conference in Prescott, and it was a wealth of information. I made contacts. I got to get to know our H-DAC committee better, and we all got the opportunity to talk about our, our vision and what, what our goals are. And we are going to put together a package that we can bring to the town council and to the public so they can see what we learned and what we hopefully implement into the town. It was, it was great. I mean, we had presenters that came from all over the country to talk to us, and some presenters that are very well-known and are hot items to get to listen to. And so they, they had so much information. You know, we learned things about the similarities between millennials and our baby boomers. And the millennials are going to surpass the number of baby boomers here shortly in this year. They will, there will be more millennials than there will be baby boomers, and the impact they're having on communities and that their goals and what they wanted, where they want to live and what they want that to look like was so helpful to me in, in everything I'm going to do on this council. Just that one conference opened my eyes and kind of solidified for me some of the, the goals that I had set for myself when I said I was going to run for council. So I just wanted to thank everybody for letting me attend. I would hope that next year, more council members want to come because it is something that you, you can get so much from. And I would hope that we would be able to have more of our H-DAC members go as well because we were not able to send all of them. We were only able to send four, plus our representative from staff and then myself. So it's something that I think is of value to everybody to get a go to. Because we are a historic town, it's good to understand the, the issues that everybody in the state is facing and throughout the nation. It's not just us and how we can correlate to one small town that we didn't realize we had anything in common with, or how Florence can learn from Prescott or Tucson and, and learn their mistakes or their, their hiccups along the way. So it was a great program to attend, and I just wanted to tell everybody thank you for letting me go to that.
And Councilmember Hughes?
I have nothing, everybody. I know. The only reason my mouth was like a gasp is nobody mentioned the Fourth of July. Oh.
Thank you very much. I said that.
I totally listened to everything you said. But you want to know what I heard? I heard, "Thank you, police, and thank you firefighters," because the mic-
On the Fourth of July? Said it? I very clearly said it. Just going to say that.
All right. I hope to see everybody down at Heritage Park. It is going to be an amazing time. This past week, I had an opportunity to attend the 60th anniversary of the Arizona-Mexico Commission. I was able to participate in a meeting with Governor, Governors, Ducey and Plavat, I can never say her name correctly, but she is amazing, Plavatchikvich. She is the Snore in Mexico governor. So there was 12 mayors on one side, 12 on another, and six members from the business community that attended. At this conference, it was a three-day conference, and they actually sponsored me for it, so there was no cost to the town. It was an $800 conference, so very grateful for that. We talked about everything from economic development to infrastructure, autonomous vehicles, and technology. There was a wealth of knowledge gleaned from that that, you know, I was able to bring back and share in a conversation with our staff, and I will also communicate that to our council, and I will get with Mr. Cowling to give him some information as well. So with that, we do have an executive session item. I hope to see everybody on Thursday at the Fourth of July. And with that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign? Carries.[1778.13]